Make more agendas.
No, okay. All right.
My name to please you guys.
Thank you.
All right. So we're gonna open the public part of our meeting now if everyone can stand and join us in a pledge allegiance. We appreciate it. Sorry. No moving parts.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to its republic, the rich citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. So tonight, do we have any public comments? Anyone that has anything that pertains to anything on the agenda with the exception of the public hearing, if you have any comments to make about any of the items on our agenda, this would be the time to make them because once the meeting starts outside of the public hearing, comments are at our discretion and time-dependent, we might not have too much time for comments because we have a very, very full agenda. So does anybody have any public comments this evening? And if you do, could you please come to this microphone and just tell us your name and address and then make your statements? No public comments? A bunch. Oh, okay.
Hi folks. Can you, on, close enough? I can be loud, so nice to see all of you again. My name is Elliot Prisby. I'm from a group called Maynard Welcomes You that assists immigrants and refugees in Maynard. I think number 19 on the meeting agenda, we're gonna be discussing recommendations that our group is gonna be making to the Board of Selectmen, so I just wanted to talk about that for a second. I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen for their consideration and also to the Bylaw Committee, to Greg Johnson, and to the Police Chief for his help, though he's not here yet. The proposed recommendation from Maynard Welcomes You is from a group of Maynard residents, citizens, and neighbors seeking to foster a welcoming atmosphere of inclusion, safety, and mutual respect in our community regardless of immigration status. The group was formed in 2016. We initially focused on direct action to help immigrants assisting our neighbors with needs such as funding, job interviews, translation, transportation, English classes, and court and medical accompaniment. As time passed, however, hate and violence inspired by the president's rhetoric and largely directed towards immigrants and minorities has increased, as federal laws have also become increasingly draconian. These effects are felt not only in cities with large immigrant populations like Framingham, we feel them right here in Maynard. To my knowledge, to date, two Maynard residents have been arrested and detained by ICE and two have been deported along with their two children who were born in America. After three years of observation, meetings deliberation, and many discussions with our immigrant neighbors, Maynard Welcomes You has decided that it's not enough for Maynard to sit idly by while the federal government terrorizes vulnerable people in our community. We respectfully request that the Board of Selectmen take a stand against racism, bigotry, and xenophobia by declaring a Maynard a safe and welcoming community for immigrants. As Martin Luther King Jr. said, "He who accepts evil without protesting it is really cooperating with it." It is time for the Maynard to decide whether or not we're gonna cooperate with evil, and I fervently hope that the Board of Selectmen will choose to stand with us in protecting our immigrant neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments on any other topic or that topic? Okay. So we have two sets of minutes to accept this evening. The first set is from our August 6th meeting, and I make a motion that we move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of August 6th, 2019, as shown. For a second.
Seconds.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about the minutes of the August 6th meeting? Okay. All those in favor? And the second set of meeting minutes is from our August 8th goal-setting meeting, and I make a motion to accept and approve the meeting minutes of August 8th, 2019, as shown. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Armand. Any questions or concerns about the August 8th minutes? Okay. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a public hearing scheduled for 7:10, and we're a minute late, so we will get to that right now. Becky, do you have the ad?
It's in the package.
Which one?
Have you all said, "Armand signed those"? Okay, we require you to read the public notice of the hearing. Yep, yep. We'll do that, and then we will have the hearing. So it's a legal notice. That's where I want.
It's the first item on the, on the.
It's in the top.
It's the first item right there, if you wanna read it.
Okay, I'll read it from there. I don't see it in here.
Right there.
All right, I got it. I got it. Okay, notice is hereby given in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, as amended, that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, August 27th, 2019, at 7:10 p.m. in a Michael J.G. Notice Meeting Room at the Maynard Town Building on the application for a new retail license on premise for all alcohol beverages as a common victory of license for Polista Pizza, Inc., doing business as Maynard Pizza House. Managers Peter Doncell and Vanessa DePaula at 149 Main Street, Maynard, Mass., and a copy of this application is on file at the Office of the Selectmen. So the hearing is open. It's 7:13. Hello.
Hey. So we're looking to get, add a bar to the pizzeria, do a little expanding, once again, do a little renovation, and include a full liquor license, just to increase business and more customers, more customers coming in to actually dine in instead of having a lot of takeout.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Quickly, when you say a bar, do you literally mean having a.
Yes, we add.
Area with liquor behind the cabinet and people sitting there.
Yes, on the application, you have the new floor plan.
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna have an, I don't know if you've been to Maynard Pizza House.
Yep.
We're gonna add an island right where our cash register is.
Okay.
And then just add the seats.
Okay.
Are you increasing the size of the?
Not the size.
Just the, just the.
Just the floor plan.
Okay. So you're cutting back into the dining?
Yeah.
Okay.
A little bit, but we'll add the seats around the bar.
Okay.
So you're closing, are you, are you closing off part of the kitchen?
The kitchen is already all the way in the back.
In the back.
Yeah. So the kitchen, we don't touch the kitchen this time.
There's, there's two tables outside?
Yeah.
Okay. And they're part of the license, too?
No.
No, that's separate, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just, they're on the, they're on the thematic.
Okay.
Okay.
I think the only thing you guys were missing that I got yesterday from our landlord was just a copy of the lease.
Becky will take that. Okay. Does anybody in the, in the, working now currently have any experience in the bar setting?
No, not currently. We're gonna take a training on September 30th.
At the Maynard.
Yes.
Tips?
With us.
We'll be there. See you there.
We'll be there.
Okay. So the tips will be out of the way in. Okay. Does this alter your hours any?
For now, no.
No?
For now, no.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions? Would anybody in the audience like to weigh in, ask any questions, or be part of this public hearing? Okay. All right. That being the case. I'd like to make a motion. There's no, well, there's no motion here, Becky.
Item number two. You're looking at the.
Oh, after the notice? Okay, so make a, the motion is, motion to approve the new liquor license to Polista Pizza, Inc., doing business at Maynard Pizza House, 149 Main Street, Maynard, on the condition that the monitor of fire protection in the building is back up and working.
Yes.
Second.
I would like to see if we could put a friendly amendment, although it probably won't matter because we have to wait for the AVCC to come back, and that will take several weeks, I would imagine, just to make sure that there's, the tips aspect is resolved prior to anything going into place. So in other words, that you have successfully passed the tips and that there will be a manager on staff with tip certified.
And per the Maynard rules and regulations, any of the new businesses have up to 60 days to pass, so since the class is September 30th, they're well within.
Yes, I just wanna make sure that they have successfully attended and passed before the license becomes effective. Even though they have that time, I don't have a problem with approving it, but as long as by the time that it's handed out, that we've got certification that it's been taken and passed. Not that I suspect you won't, but just to be safe, make sure we're protected.
No.
I just wanna thank you for investing.
Thank you.
For doing this. This is great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's wonderful to have someone.
And I could see your concern because most of the business you're doing is a lot of takeout, and I think that could help you maybe.
It's a lot. We did the renovation, and then we hope that more people will be coming in, but they still have that old aspect of Maynard Pizza House that's just like takeout, takeout. And now I think with the bar, it's just gonna be a lot of dining in.
Are you gonna expand the menu, too, or?
I'm gonna add more appetizers, more different things. We're currently leaning towards more Italian food, so expanding that town, too.
Great.
Okay. All right, last chance. Anybody have any public comments to make in regards to this issue? Okay. Any other questions from any of the board? All right, all those in favor? Thank you, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I will be there.
All right. Okay. All right, we have correspondence items to approve this evening. I make a motion to accept and approve correspondence items A through G as shown. Do you have a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Melissa. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about any of the correspondence items this evening?
Do we typically fill out the election nomination form for the MPO? Is that something that?
The past, I'm not sure if you have, but you can now, but you wouldn't.
I wasn't sure if, if that's something that we do, so.
I don't remember.
It doesn't sound familiar, so I just wasn't sure if we, if we do, or if we're supposed to, or whatnot, so.
You can't, but, but, yeah, of course you can, but per the other correspondence from the Town of Bedford.
Yeah.
It's more like, "Do you object to the Town of Bedford's recommendation?" That's how I read it. That's what we do.
And no, I don't, I don't object at all.
So, after the Maynard golf report, from the golf course, they're looking to, again, raise rates considerably considering the prices have been for inferior product at this point based on the condition of the course, which is their responsibility. Can you find out, just let us know, in the area, what other municipal courses in the area, if the residents of those areas get a price break.
Okay.
As opposed to the rest of the world? I mean, I think, I think it's a pretty common practice, but I just, they just don't do it, and I'm just kinda trying to find out if that's something we should be pressing them on. So, does anybody else have any questions about the correspondence items, A through G?
So on the G, is that something that we have to? So, we're gonna have any action on that?
So that, so that's just the correspondence portion.
Gotcha.
We have a later, or.
Oh, you do have later on an agenda?
To discuss it.
Got it.
Okay. Anything else? David?
I'm good.
Ladies?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor? Thank you. Consent agenda is two items this week, and I make a motion that we accept and approve the two consent agenda items, A and B, as shown. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody have any questions about the two permits, Crow Park on September 6th and Rio Park Playground on September 2nd?
No conflict on that Crow Park date, time with the ones that we've already approved for Crow Park usage.
They're ending the soccer on Friday night and.
Beginning this right after.
And all the students are coming in. Yeah, the school is very aware that it's soccer first and then they picnic next.
Very cool. Don't wanna have the argument on the.
Soccer ball in the middle of picnic. All right. So, any other questions on the consent items? Okay, all those in favor of the two? All right. Motion to accept and approve the one-day license to Richard Barron of 73 Groot Road in Maynard for a group of dates as follows, 9/7, 9/8, 9/14, 9/15, 9/21, 9/22, 9/28, 9/29, located at 58 Main Street in the alleyway for a temporary beer garden, as shown. Seconds. Drinking beer in an alley now? Drinking beer in an alley now? All right. I wanted to, so just give us the, you know, general synopsis of what you guys are doing on those dates.
Those are Saturdays and Sundays.
Yep.
Through the month of September, and it'd be between, what is it, 12 and like 9:00 p.m.
Yeah.
Weather permitting, just to have an open entertainment beer garden space.
Okay. Is this, is this part of Amory's Tomb, or totally separate from Amory's Tomb?
No, it's gonna be separate. I'm not a license holder. I'm gonna be doing this on my own, as.
All right.
It will be.
Okay.
We have, just, you know, we have the drawings here for everything, and all of the applications and the stuff that did not make it over with the initial letter to the Selectmen, just so you know, if you guys wanna see them.
Do you guys like to see, yeah.
No, this is, this looks, this looks better.
Yeah, sorry, I only have one copy of it. There's drawings of the beer garden.
How wide is the alley?
The alley is about 78 feet currently at the moment.
Width?
Width. Here's the alleyway.
So 21 feet.
See, it's getting right in here, so it's, oh, sorry. I wanna say it's 20, the alley's 20 feet, 20 inches, it's about 18 feet wide by 70 feet.
Okay. Okay.
And the barriers you're gonna put up, is it?
There's existing stockade fence.
Yeah.
Going down one side. We'll continue that all the way to the end, and then put up the four-foot metal fencing.
Okay, just like a standard.
Chain link, chain link fence?
No, like a nice.
Okay.
Right, a railing?
It's just around cafes and things like that.
Okay. Yeah, that's.
Now, the chief had a concern about this? Is that, that's something that you had a concern that wasn't answered yet? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. So we, we talked.
Outside, in the alleyway?
Just, it is a little unconventional, so I did have some questions. Some of the things maybe the board should consider is how, how late, because they're gonna be outside, obviously, so I don't know, the noise issue on the weekend. And then I recommended that maybe they and I meet after the first weekend, and if there's any adjustments, if we need to hire a detail officer, we can make some adjustments then, see how the first weekend goes, and something that maybe we didn't anticipate, we can address then. If that's okay with the board, just.
No, that's fine.
It's kinda, since it's new and we haven't seen it before.
So you got, right, so you guys look at 12 to 8:00 p.m.? Is that, is that the accurate hours?
Correct, yes.
Yes.
So that's, okay.
We want to end early enough, it gets cold and dark.
Yeah, just daylight hours in the afternoon.
Okay. So, go ahead, go ahead.
You don't anticipate, or perhaps you do, any music outside, do you?
We do, we do. So, yeah, actually, as part of it, I would request the entertainment license as part of this as well, for the right to have music and stuff. I don't expect anything crazy, nothing loud, but we'd definitely like to have the ability to play some speakers or something. I don't.
My sensitivity would be for the folks who live on River Street. Not that I, you know, I think this is one of the issues you can probably talk to the chief with about after the first week to make sure that everything, and as far as I know, there's no residences upstairs there at.
Not on that side, no.
On that side, and across the street, nobody lives up there. That's studios, right?
No, I don't think so.
Business, business studios.
Yeah, I think there's, like, a practice space, too, up there for a band or something.
Yeah, I think so. And then there might be, like, businesses up there, too, but, yeah, so really, the only concern would be for the residents that live on River Street, and just making sure. Have they been contacted at all? Did you reach out to them? No?
No, we have not.
Okay. Just to make sure that they know who to contact, should they have a problem the first night, and understand what's going on. I think we'll be okay.
I mean, I personally, it's 8:00 p.m. and stuff.
No, yeah. It should not be a problem, just, you know, you never know.
Yeah.
You know, the new baby that came home that wasn't anticipated to come home, that suddenly, you know.
Well, I work at night and sleep during the day, so.
You know, who knows?
We think everything. All right, so 12 to 8, one, two, four weekends, five weekends in.
That should be fun.
September. Okay.
Just so you know, on the application, we did ask for rain dates for two dates in October, if any of those days happen to fall. I think it's, I already gave them to you, but I think it's 12th and 13th, of correspondence, something like that, Saturday and Sunday.
14, 15.
That might be right. I'm sorry, my date's.
Becky, can you just remind us, and for the edification of the audience, I know that there is some type of a limitation on one-day licenses that a business can have in a particular year, and I don't think this encroaches it, but just, what is that number, is it like 32 or something?
It's 30, like, one days that they can have in one given year.
Okay. Twelve licenses? Is it 12 separate licenses with that number of days, or is it one for each day?
One for each day.
What number is, which, which one is 12? We have one license that you can only get 12 times a year?
Not sure.
I'm not.
The one, because that's what we gave to Celia T.'s Dance Studio, when we talked to them when they came in, we told them they had, they could get up to 12 of the particular licenses.
No, they could get up to 30, single days.
We told, we told them 12, but it's okay. Missing out. I know, I know we told them 12, 'cause, that's okay, but, so they know we're near with that. So what, do you have the rain dates? Please?
I think it's 14, 15, maybe, I don't.
It's on the actual paper applications for the town. I apologize.
Do you know what they are, off the top of your head?
I just, I can't remember what the Saturday and Sunday are, but it's on the actual town application paperwork that was in there. I'll look it up and tell you right now.
There was a fifth and sixth, and a 12th and a 13th.
It's not the fifth and sixth, following weekend, because the Maynard Fest is a following weekend.
All right, so I'll amend the, the motion and add on to the motion with potential rain dates of October 12th and 13th. Got two of them. All right. Does anybody else have any questions for the gentleman? All those in favor? Good luck with the beer garden.
Have fun, have fun.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just, just.
We'll go for the chief.
He knows where to find you. All right, next up is a request for a one-day event for use of street space during Maynard Fest and for a one-day expanded license. And the motion is to accept and approve the one-day license by Alan Quinn for Beer Garden with all alcohol and entertainment on Maynard Fest Day, Saturday, October 5th, 2019, from 10:30 a.m. until 3:30 p.m., located at 76 Main Street, out on Public Way, as shown. Do you have a second?
Does Pleasant Cafe do one, too?
They do.
Fest Day do one also, right?
They do.
Just because there's a lot of people running around that day, are you gonna have a means to, like, stamp or bracelet people since it's outside? Okay.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions? This is on the, the street itself?
On the sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
In the parking, in the parking area there.
By, by the church?
No, directly in front of the brewery.
Oh, right.
So in the parking space, so like, where the booths are usually set up, we work at the chamber, so where would have.
The width of your property.
The width of just our side, so half that building.
Right, so the width of your, your building, and then the two parking spaces in front of it, which are not being used for parking anyway.
Not during the day, correct, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, here, I have a picture of that as well, if you.
Okay, yeah, I see it. No, we have it here.
We have it.
Yeah, we have it, we have it. Yeah, we have it. I've just confirmed that that's what we're looking at, so. All right. 10:30 until 3:30. Fire chief and building commissioner have no issues with the event for use for Maynard Fest. Police chief comments pending further research may provide comments to the BOS in person. Chief, any comments on the, on that one?
Is this here?
The beer garden.
Maynard Fest.
Maynard Fest?
Yeah, no, sir, there was no, no concerns. I wasn't sure which one it was.
Now, that's the, the second one. Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Alan? All those in favor? All right.
Good luck with that, too.
Yeah.
Good luck with Maynard Fest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll leave.
All right, the motion on number, item number nine, is the motion to accept and approve the expanded hours for ATBC LLC, doing business as Amory's Tomb Brewing Company at 76 Main Street on Sundays from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. New hours on Sundays would be 12:00 noon till 8:00 p.m. as shown. Do you have a second?
Second.
Does anybody have any questions for Alan in regards to the increase in hours?
Shouldn't be a problem. Liquor stores open up at that time, no?
Huh?
Liquor stores open up at that time.
At what time?
12 o'clock.
Noon, yeah, on Sundays, yeah.
Well, it's the staying open late part. So now, what is, so, actually, the question's more for Becky than for, for Alan, is just, we have other, other restaurants and things that serve alcohol after 6 o'clock on Sundays, correct?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
I thought so, but I haven't.
Till 1:00 a.m.
That's right.
We got a sukkah now, sukkah is 1:00 a.m.
They're next.
The original hours were based on, at the time of our first application, what the Maynard liquor store hours were, which was 6:00 p.m.
Yes.
Which changed before we ever even got our license. That's why we decided to come back and say, "Let's amend this to try and get more in line with everybody else."
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other questions?
The state blue laws changed, and that was part of why the liquor stores can stay open later on Sundays.
Okay.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions in regards to the change in hours, other than Justine's? All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, good luck.
Frank?
I'm gonna read it very patiently.
I hear the longest. He's here the longest.
Thank you very much.
So we have, along the same old lines, we have two.
They may want to hang around up till, because he says 10:00 a.m. now, maybe they want to come back.
Thank you, thank you for waiting, patience.
That's true.
So the first, the first item, number 10, for Mr. Durkis, is a motion to approve the change on the Sunday alcohol hours at Pleasant Cafe, 36 Main Street, Maynard, to 10:00 a.m. and past the opening hours, we're at noon, so you're looking for two extra hours in the morning on Sundays. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so, so we, I assume that if you're looking for two extra hours, you're going to be open at 10:00 and do it something different on Sundays?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Bloody Mary brunches?
Hope so.
Okay, all right, does anybody have any questions for Frank in relation to, you guys' change of hours from noon to 10:00? It has, says, does say here that the fire and police departments do not have issues with the expanded hours. Anyone had a concern about those? And you have, breakfast relax, we start at 7:00 a.m.?
I'm hoping to start in October.
Open, okay, yes. I'm just reading this, this, no, so it says at some point, okay, and then, okay.
Great.
So the mosses will be pouring, right, at 10:00 a.m.?
Not at 10:00 a.m., and then during the week at 8:00.
Nice.
Okay.
My, my comment, Frank, is to congratulate you guys on the, you know, the changes that you've made over the last several years.
You've done a nice job.
And, you know, I think that you've become, you know, it used to be the PC as the bar, now it's the PC as the restaurant and go-to place for people who, you know, go for the music and everything else, it's become a much different locale, and that's a compliment to you all.
Thank you.
And, you know, your family has been involved in town for years, and has always been contributor to the community, and what you've done there, in my opinion, is fantastic.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Congratulations, and I wish you continued luck.
Thank you.
And with good fortune over there.
I hope so.
Yeah.
Yeah, your new menu is great.
She said so.
When you work in town, there's limited places, so that's my go-to.
You just have to try everything.
All right.
No, I think it's great. Again, it's, it's investing, continuing to invest in the town, and continue to invest in the, in the businesses, and, and we really appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate that, yeah.
It's wonderful.
So, yeah, so all those in favor of the change in hours from 12 to 10:00? Good luck with breakfast, brunch, and all the rest.
Thank you very much. Oh, and he's here again.
He's here for the Fest.
You leave? Oh, you didn't leave yet. All right, the second one is for a request for a one-day event on Maynard Fest for the Pleasant Cafe, and the motion reads, a motion to approve the one-day license for expanded space on a public way for the Pleasant Cafe of 36, on 36 Main Street, on Saturday, October 5th, from 9:00 a.m. until 3:30 p.m. Again, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. And, again, the police and fire do not have issues with the event on Saturday, October 5th, so that's clear. Does anybody have any other questions for Frank in relation to the extra space on a, on a public way?
Not for Frank, but a comment on these approvals relative to repeats for, I know that we've, we've sort of said that anything alcohol-related, we wanted to have in front of us, but my thought for the board's consideration going forward would be to have, even with, with annual alcohol issues, unless there has been a previous alcohol complaint from the year before, that these become consent agenda items, rather than requiring the, the business owner to come before us when it's exactly the same. If there's alterations to the plan, that's one thing, if there's no alterations and there's been no complaint filed by the police, I don't see the need to bring the business owner in before the board annually, if it's been successful the previous time. The first time, yes, so we know what's going on, and then going forward, not necessary, that's.
The chairman says the agenda's, and I wouldn't.
No, no, I, I'm just.
He's just making a recommendation.
Just making a recommendation, that's all.
Which makes a lot of sense, if you think about it, I mean.
Yeah, it's, that's the way we typically would do it. Don't tell Alan. He's gone.
He'll come back.
No, I, again, you know, to David, echo David's points, it's, the changes and everything that's going on down the street are great, and, you know, this is always a great day, Oktoberfest, so, all those in favor? Good luck with that, and good luck with the Sundays.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Maybe we won't have to have you back next year.
Unless you want to extend the hours again.
If we remember, yeah.
Have a good night.
See you around.
We'll see you in September.
Okay.
What's happening in September?
He's coming in to ask for the extra hour on Black and Orange tonight, and on New Year's Eve.
Did we do that before?
We have Flo.
So we can put it, can we put it on the consent?
That could be to the point.
We've never done it for Pleasant Cafe before.
We've done it for Flo, we've done it for Frank.
All right, Flo, have a seat.
We gave you an extra hour, and you have New Year's Eve.
Oh.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, I need to, that's on my next list, but that's not today. You had enough on the list for today.
So, requests for a one-day event during the Maynard Elks Family Day, Saturday, September 28th, 2019, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and we have a motion that reads, motion to approve the one-day expanded license for the Maynard Elks Family Day and 90th Birthday Celebration on Saturday, September 28th, 2019. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And, again, the police and fire have no objections with this event, so.
I like your invite, with the little pig, it's so cute.
She did give it.
All right, all right, well, anybody have any questions for Flo?
Not at all.
So this is.
Enjoy it.
Happy birthday.
Thanks.
90. Do you get any recognition from the national organization for being 90?
I don't know. There's, I don't know, it could be.
Maybe.
I don't know.
Remains to be seen.
And this is, so, a month from tomorrow, on Saturday, September 28th.
Fantastic.
I guess you guys know the rules, so, does anybody have any other questions for Flo? All those in favor? Thank you. Just one for you?
Thanks.
Who wants to go around and answer another question?
No, it's okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, she's going to take it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Can we do it for the 28th?
Yeah, we'll send a letter to Kate.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
And we might as well send one to Senator Eldridge, too.
One of you will need to go.
Huh?
Well, you send an email reminding us when it gets closer.
Yeah, Melissa's going to go, because she liked the invitation.
I did.
I heard it, I heard it.
Right.
All right, the next motion is a temporary town clerk appointment, and the motion reads that we move to approve the temporary town clerk employment agreement effective August 29th, 2019, and shall be in full force and effect until discontinued by the Board of Selectmen per agreement.
Second.
Do we have a second, okay? So, so Greg, this, this is just giving us permission to do this?
This is for the contract, because James Mullen would be acting as a vendor.
Okay. Is he here?
He's not.
Okay, so he's, all right, so, does anybody have any questions for Greg in regards to this item? No.
Well, I think, Greg, if you could just briefly, so, for the people watching, the people in the audience, just explain what this is all about, and why this is being approved here.
So, due to the extended absence of Town Clerk, Michelle Sokolowski, we have been actively recruiting or searching for a temporary town clerk. There was some question as to the appointing authority, whether we could have two town clerks simultaneously, whether we should hire an assistant town clerk in the meantime. Town Council provided guidance that it is appropriate to hire a temporary town clerk, per the appointment of the Board of Selectmen, and James Mullen is a well-known, quite reputable temporary town clerk. He was a long-term town clerk in another town for many, many, many years, and since then, has been a traveling temporary town clerk. He's, he's helped out five or six other municipalities when they've needed a town clerk in the, in the absence of a town clerk, so we're thrilled to have him. He would be starting on Tuesday. This effective date is, is just for the purposes of the contract, but his actual starting date is Tuesday, Monday is a holiday. Town halls will be closed. He'll have not full hours, he's not, he doesn't, he, he was agreed to not to have to have him work on Fridays, but otherwise, he'll be here at the, at the start of town hall, and it would be good to have someone in place in the absence of the regular town clerk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, all those in favor of the employment agreements? Okay. Next up is the employee. Make a motion that we move to approve and appoint James G. Mullen, Jr. as temporary town clerk, effective August 29th, 2019.
Second.
Thank you. All right, since we can't ask too many questions, all those in favor? Thank you. All right. Next up is the Director of Public Works appointment, and we, there's two motions within that item, and the first is a move to approve the Director of Public Works contract, effective start date, and shall be in full force and effect until the date that the contract is going to be in effect.
So, Mr. Chairman, we don't have the start date right now for, for this.
Okay.
The negotiations were ongoing, and so it, by the time we posted the, the agenda, we just didn't have the contract finalized, but, per the guidance of the Selectmen in the executive session, we should be moving to finalize it, and by the next Selectmen's agenda, I, I hope to have it publicly approved.
Perfect.
Okay, so, Nate, what's his name again?
James DiMarco.
Justin.
Justin DiMarco.
Okay, so, Justin DiMarco.
I think he's sitting here.
He's here.
He is.
Yep, come on up, sir.
He must be smiling for a reason.
So, I'll read, I'll read the motion as it's in front of us, because we can appoint pending contract ratification, so I make a motion that we move to approve and appoint Justin DiMarco as Director of Public Works, with a yet-to-be-determined start date pending contract ratification.
This should be fine.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa. Sugar's kicking in, huh?
It is. I'm on it, I'm on.
All right, so, welcome.
I can explain the process of how, how we got to this, Mark.
Sure, sure, yep.
So, largely to the hard work of HR Coordinator Stephanie Duggan, we advertised and accepted applications for the position of the Director of Public Works, out of a, a good pool of candidates. We were able to do a series of interviews. The second round of interviews included Select Board Member Justin St. John, myself, Police Chief, Fire Chief, HR Coordinator as an, as an observer, and, and I requested Richard Chip Barrett, who's the Highway Superintendent for the Town of Westford, who has significant amount of, of experience, as the interviewing board for the finer interviews. At that point, the candidate, Justin DiMarco, had, had risen to the top, so to speak, and we're very excited to have him offer his name and, and his experience to the town. He is a resident of Hudson, he has worked for the city of Marlborough for, for a very long time, in a, in different capacities, all within the Department of Public Works. He has, is a great reputation, has all his references, had nothing but good things to say about him, and so he's my candidate to the Board of Selectmen requesting for appointment.
Great.
Excellent.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. DiMarco?
I've got a couple. Welcome.
Thank you, David.
Look forward to working with you. Can you talk a little bit about your history relative to working within budgets, with budgets, developing budgets, and, you know, overall, what's your experience with budgeting?
So, I work in a capacity of a budget, we work in line item budgets in the city of Marlborough. In my capacity, I work in multiple different areas. Within that budget, I provide insight for capital outlay plans, equipment capital plans, operating capital plans, this is all within the realm of what I do within the city of Marlborough. We kind of work as a team, we're a much larger DPW, so we tend to work not necessarily in individualized situations, we tend to come up with our finances based off of a team approach, what benefits the organization the best, and kind of, each one of the skilled positions in the general supervisor's situation provides insight into what they're looking for, but as a whole, we kind of look at the bigger picture and kind of develop our regular operating plan and capital outlay plans, you know, to benefit the, the community as a whole, not just a basic department.
Have you personally developed a budget for your own department, Marlborough?
No, no, the Commissioner of Public Works and the Department of Public Works for the city of Marlborough has the final say in the appropriation of all the funds or the request of budgets. It goes to FinCom, the mayor is kind of like what Greg is in the situation. For the most part, we just add insight in our recommendations. Typically, our operating budgets stay within the realm of a traditional line, adjusting based off of the environment of a number of factors, but for the most part, the Commissioner does the final and overall situation when it comes to development.
Do you feel comfortable working, developing your own budget?
Yes, I do.
If I may.
You may.
One of the concerns that you probably heard about through the, through the process is the concern that, that many of us have here in Maynard relative to our aging infrastructure, which I'm sure is the same in Marlborough, it's probably the same in Hudson, too.
Correct, yes.
In Marlborough. What type of experience do you have with, if, if any, and, you know, no wrong or right answers here, I'm just looking for some insight.
Correct.
Relative to planning the infrastructure for the future, relative to replacement plans, and then, cost assessments, and how to build that into the future rate planning, et cetera, can you discuss that a bit?
So, part of the situation with me onboarding, I will have to, not knowing the community as well as I do in Marlborough, I grew up in Marlborough, it was something I've worked for the public works since I was in high school, and very familiar with the area and the town. Coming into Maynard, I'm going to have to rely on a number of the individuals that hold positions within the organization, historical views on some of the infrastructure, working with the engineering firm that you currently hire, to start to understand the priority infrastructure program that's already set up, if there is one set up, working hand-in-hand with the community to understand where your priorities start to lie. I understand some of it is water utility situations, as I am somewhat familiar with that, and the community development aspect. Setting up a plan is something that will take time, but is something that I'm very willing to start to sit down and accumulate information from the larger committee, the community as a whole, and really relying on, like I said before, the individuals that are currently in positions that have potential knowledge of 20, 30 years' experience within the community and the DPW. the community and the DPW. With that, I tend to take a team approach in starting to develop a five, 10, 15-year infrastructure capital plan. These are things that most communities have, looks very good on their bond rating, I'm assuming this is where you're, you're kind of looking for this.
And I'm sure you're aware, we have sort of, it's, it's a separate budget, per se, but it's still, everybody's pocketbook, in one pocketbook, but it goes in different directions.
General fund, yes.
So, we've got what we call enterprise funds, which are common throughout the Commonwealth, that, that are responsible for our water and sewer, and they're separate within themselves. And so, it's within that budget and that's, you know, from the residents' perspective, you know, they get a water bill and a sewer bill, and that's on top of their, their regular property tax bill. So, we have to control the rates that are increasing in the water and sewer just as much as we want to control the rates that are increasing. So, that's all part of the trick and that, that I'm hopeful that you can bring to us some, some thoughtfulness and some experience relative to how are we going to get these 10-year, have this 10-year vision and fit it within the water and sewer budgets that don't break the backs of our residents.
Correct, yes, and, and that's the gauge of what the community wants as a whole. Is water that important? Are you in a situation where you're dire, or is it something that we could start to build a process off over five, 10, 15 years? Incorporating certain things into the enterprise fund is what we do in Marlborough, equipment for water utilities, individualized, so that we're kind of mimicking what you would see with Eversource, National Grid. These utilities, their response time is, is very fast, their staff is up to level, they do that based off the rates. And this could happen within your water and sewer division, within your water treatment plants, based off your enterprise fund. So, it depends on the Board of Selectmen and how they want to approach it. In the city of Marlborough, we've found success with purchasing large equipment, some upgrades through our enterprise fund, but we also look for capital plans when we do, some of our lift stations and our bigger infrastructure improvements. So, it's kind of a juggle and depends on where you want to go and how we would talk about it moving forward, so.
And another aspect that we are talking about frequently and concerned about, quite honestly, is the availability of water because of, it's a limited resource.
Correct, yes.
And, you know, we've gotten less production out of some of our wells than we possibly would have liked, so we're looking for a potential additional source, which you're probably familiar with.
Yes.
Over at White's Pond, but there's a delivery system that's necessary for that that is extremely expensive, that will also be part of this 10-year plan.
Right, correct.
So that we, which also would probably require an additional treatment plant, and, you know, when you start thinking of the money that's involved with the limited resources of 10,000 residents, it becomes somewhat daunting.
Correct, yes.
But those are all things that we need to have on the, on the table and that people need to be talking about immediately for how we're going to address that going forward so that we have some redundancy in the, in the, in the system.
Mm-hmm.
If one of our wells goes down, we do not ever want to be in a situation where we can't fight a fire.
Right, correct.
So, you want to have at least some additional resource that's available. The last question I have is more relative to supervisory experience that you might have had in your past. What's the total number of people at any one given time that you've supervised?
So, it fluctuates day-to-day. It can be three, up to 78, sometimes up to 110. So, it depends on the situation. As a supervisor, my typical team consists of anywhere between five and six on a daily basis. When special events happen, it depends on the large-scale capacity of the events, they get upwards of 20, 30. Snow and ice events, which is very common for a DPW in New England, the way that we do our snow and ice events within the city of Marlborough is we have a rotation of our supervisors, so a typical salt operation is somewhere in the 40 to 50-plus contractors and a plow operation is upwards of 120 pieces of equipment, 120 pieces of personnel. So, within my rotation with the other supervisors, I could be up to 120 people, down to three, and it really fluctuates. I kind of move across channels, as I explained to Greg. My commissioner that started probably about five or six years ago has a, has an accounting business background and a public service background, very different than what our previous commissioner was, was an engineering-based firm situation where an umbrella was kind of like a hierarchy system of a DPW. You see it in public safety all the time. He incorporated what we call like a horizontal system. We start to work freely, we don't wait for commands as much as three or four managers above, we're able to work faster, more efficient, productive. Within that realm, we're also learning the aspects of finance, like how important it is, how we can set up plans for the future, planning, it becomes a process that's kind of spread around. And within that, I have found myself being one of the very few supervisors that is able to actually go from different parts of the organization freely. There's a lot of trust within myself and the commissioner of the DPW where I'm allowed to kind of free-range somewhat. I do the special projects and a number of other things. So, within that, I do a lot of cross-channel stuff. I work hand-in-hand with commissions, nonprofits, et cetera, that have to do with special projects.
And then one last question. How do you go about, what's your thought process when you go about prioritizing issues within the department with limited resources?
So, I always try to take the community first.
I'm not talking money resources, I'm talking...
It could be a number of things, equipment, personnel.
Number of people, exactly.
Yes, exactly. So, part of the onboarding process, and I'm not sure if you kind of got some of the paperwork that I provided Justine in the interview, so part of that process is observation at first. I'm coming from a rather large organization down to a smaller organization. Now, this isn't like, this isn't crazy, it's actually, sometimes it's easier to find the efficiencies in the smaller than it is in the larger. So, observation is key, understanding personnel, these are things that trust has to be built both ways. Observing the day-to-day operation is vital at first, starting to understand, you know, what that team technically is right now prioritizing based on what the community wants or, or maybe the town administrators' wants or the Board of Selectmen, or you can even say the stakeholders of this community, what their priorities are. It is my job within the first three to four months to really understand what Maynard wants from their department and start to prioritize based off of that, not necessarily what the organization currently does. So, it's going to be kind of a learning curve to meet all of you and some of the residents behind us and so on, et cetera, and start to kind of understand what Maynard is looking for as a whole.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who else?
No. I think David did a great job of asking all the right questions.
So, can you tell us, just explain to us a little bit about the four-in-one truck deal?
What?
I just, I'm just curious.
Pick that one.
Like, you know, so, so we talked a little bit about it in our, in our other, our other meeting and then I'm just kind of curious as to what exactly is four are. What are the four, you know? Because it could be, there could be, there's so many different options, so just, if you could just, just kind of give us a brief... Right. So, are you familiar with DPW-style equipment, dump trucks, sanders, et cetera? Okay. So, within my realm of a supervisor, I would, I have the ability to spec our equipment, it's one of my stronger points. I've been in the DPW a very long time and actually used a multitude of equipment, I have almost every license that you can get from the state, et cetera. So, within this realm, I do a lot of the emergency management stuff for the Department of Public Works with the public safety. So, the truck itself is what you see, it's called a hook loader. So, you see this in the military way back in the day and DPWs are starting to get into this now, it's very popular in Europe. So, the truck itself is four different trucks. It is a log loader, which is a crane, the log loader itself is a palm finger Z-style that actually folds up into itself behind the cab. So, behind that is the hook system. So, it is a dump, it is an equipment hauler because as you drop the box, we can actually drive smaller equipment in. So, you can actually eliminate Class A drivers, I don't know if you pay extra for that here, but we do, we pay stipends. So, with that, you can do that, sander, and it also operates as a plow vehicle. Oh, and we do de-liquid, excuse me, within salt and ice program, we do liquid applications of brine, it also has a brine tank, but the, this is all we bought, the limitless, it's, the truck itself is limitless. We can buy a hot box, we can buy whatever you, whatever you can possibly imagine a DPW needs, this truck is capable of doing it all within one apparatus. That was the important part for us. So, the overall cost was expensive at first, but if you look at it in four different vehicles, the cost savings were astounding, so.
No, I understand it better.
I will show you pictures if you want.
I've seen them, but, okay, we're not ready for that yet.
If you see the crane in action, that is actually its strongest point, and we've done a number of hurricane situations, ice storms, et cetera, where we clear the roads in an alarming rate and we have actually, the mayor has implemented a service after those that we were able to actually provide storm relief for our own community. Residents were able to bring out their storm debris to the front and we were able to pick it up almost like a trash company and we were done in a very short amount of time with this vehicle, so.
That's good.
You passed the distraction test, you know, I'd do whatever I can to distract the individual to see if they can...
You're just fine, you're just fine.
I think you're testing him to see if he sees water.
I saw you, I was trying to continue so nobody else saw.
Does the truck have a dryer on it?
That's five-in-one now.
Oh, yeah, keep growing. So, does anybody else have any questions for Justin?
No, I, I just think that it's very obvious that you have an extensive background and experience and I could see why Greg was very impressed with your expertise. I think to piggyback David's point, I think one of the crucial aspects of work in a smaller town is understanding our budget.
Correct.
And I think that's going to be something that you're probably going to have to take a little bit more time to get.
Correct.
The rest of the stuff, I think Greg and the, and the town hall could help you with a lot of information that you're going to be able to, you know, dissect through, but we welcome having you onboard, I think you'll be a great addition.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. Anything else to add?
Look forward to working with him.
Yeah, we appreciate your interest.
And I could see why you like Justin, because you lean Justine.
Exactly.
Justine, Justin, everybody, we appreciate everyone's hard work on getting somebody qualified to come and work in this capacity. So, all those in favor of the appointments? So, that's, that's that, then you guys will just continue and once the contract is set and you guys have come to agreement, we'll put it on the next agenda, ratify it, and away we go. So, good luck with it and welcome aboard. Thank you, I'm humbled. Thank you.
Glad to have you aboard.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Justin.
Mr. Coolidge School, folks.
I'm pointing to Lyndy Geir, getting, trying to get her.
Okay, Linda.
Lyndy.
Lyndy, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Good evening. Yeah, you can sit anywhere.
Yeah, yeah, wherever you're comfortable.
Thank you.
Are, are all three here?
Is Evros or Adam?
Lydia's here.
Yeah, no, Adam's here.
Lydia's here and Adam. Eve Schluter had to work in Boston tonight, so she couldn't make it.
All right, so, I'll read the motion, the motion is to appoint Lydia Clancy, Eve Roe Schluter, and Adam Con to the Coolidge School Property Working Group with a term expiring December 31st, 2020, and, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So, I, I mean, unless anybody has any pressing questions, I think that we're, we're all very familiar with the four, as well as...
Well, yeah, all three of you, yeah.
Absolutely. So, unless anybody has any questions, do you have any questions other than...
I'm listening.
We do appreciate you guys volunteering to be here.
All the hard work you guys have been doing is unbelievable.
Lydia taking on the extra on top of her school committee duties, appreciate that. So, there's Donna, Sarah, Vicky Brown Stevens, and Lyndy, and I will add three more.
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for either of them?
So, I guess the question I would have, and I think that it was kind of referenced, but maybe for people who don't know, why are you adding them to the committee?
Yes.
Because Ben, you, the committee's existed for about a year, six months now, yeah.
So, when the committee was originally appointed, there were five of us, including Aaron McClosco from the DPW. When he left, we were down to four. As we enter, we have put out an RFP along with Greg Johnson so that we can see what kind of interest there is in Coolidge School, and we will be bringing to special town meeting a vote again to, to sell the school, that seems to be the best option. But in the meantime, we want the citizens to know what type of reuse might occur with the school. So, this particular committee is going to enter the RFP review and rating stage, and then we'll make a selection and bring that recommendation to all of you. And we wanted a wider, and as well as more in-depth cross-section of the community weighing in during that stage. So, Adam brings master planning experience along with a lot of experience with project management. Lydia's passion is architecture and development and project management, so they will really add to that, so we're very excited. Eve Schluter had a lot to do with the playground renovation four, four or five years ago, so she knows a lot about the drainage there, should any regrading need to occur. And I have a couple of potential other additions in the pipeline, but I'm meeting with them this week, so you may see me again. One is a developer with worldwide experience, he's obviously not building, you know, bidding on the building, and the other is Ken Newhauser, who would represent the historic commission, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
And I understand you already have a few bites.
That's, that's what I hear, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, we, we did have two P, two developers who were very interested, so I'm hoping that both of them have told Greg that they're putting in a proposal.
They have not, but...
That's why they're, that's why they...
Let me...
That's why they're bites.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I'll keep my fingers crossed.
Killjoy, who invited them?
Sorry.
Well, I mean, we, you know, certainly as always, we appreciate everyone that comes before us in, in the town of volunteers to contribute, so we appreciate it, and all those in favor of the three appointments? Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks for volunteering.
The appointment slips will be in with our town start, which is starting on Thursday. Okay, wonderful. And...
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Oh, I thought Tuesday. And I also just wanted to make sure that the current four members, that our term is extended to December 2020 as well, and, and the, the original scope was going to be expanded.
So, that's the next one.
Okay, great.
Right, so, the scope is the next one and I'm, because I don't have the original scope in front of me, I'll read this entire thing.
Well, if you would like to, Mr. Chairman, you could just read it as presented, per the motion. Go for, do whatever you want.
Someone's going to ask, well, what is it?
Very well.
So, I might as well read it, right?
Very well.
So, "Motion to approve amended charge for the Coolidge School Property Working Group as presented, and it is presented as such. In addition to extend the scope of work for the working group in that they bring forward to the Board of Selectmen for final recommendations. The scope of work for the Coolidge School Working Group should expand to include reviewing, rating, and selecting the proposal that best meets the purchase and adaptive reuse goals of the Coolidge School request for proposal that was issued by the town of Maynard on August 1st. The CSWG will then bring that recommendation forward to the Board of Selectmen. If no viable proposals are received, the CSWG will communicate that recommendation as well. The CSWG will help to communicate and educate town residents regarding the selected proposal. Upon request, the CSWG will help to fine-tune the article's sponsor comments and PowerPoint slides to be used at special town meeting. The CSWG will also assist in explaining and garnering community support during Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals meetings that will be held regarding the A and R lot, lot dimensional requirements, building setbacks, and parking lot setbacks. Finally, the working group will also serve in an as-needed advisory capacity to help the town once a sale has been finalized. This may include helping with some background information needed for the developer in town of Maynard to apply for a community development block grant through the state of Massachusetts, or advising the developer or town so that the original intent of the RFP goals are The community, the community development block submission date is March 1st, 2020, so the work of the Coolidge School Working Group is extended through that date. So, that's the original, extended through, so you'd have to be reextended after March.
That, that's fine, I don't really see...
Right, but you, you just appointed these three until December 31st.
That's right.
So, so, yes, you'd have to do the rest of them.
They could overthrow you.
And that would be fine.
But just remember, we just have to, we just have to extend you guys.
Donna could take over.
So, we just have to extend you guys before March 1st, because that's when, that's when we just extended the original group, too. So, after March 1st, we'll extend it till everyone matches the same date.
You could do it now if you would like, Mr. Chairman. It's not on the agenda, but...
All right, we can do that. I will look and I will say, we'll make another motion, make a motion to extend the appointment of current CSWG members Donna Dodson, Sarah Donnelly, Vicky Brown Stevens, and Lyndy Geir through December 31st, 2020. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? You're in.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We haven't done the motion.
You haven't voted on the, the second.
Okay, so now... Okay, so now, does anybody have any questions about the charge I read or the new charge, the new charge I read, or anything within it?
The one thing that I needed a little bit of clarification on was the, and it could just be semantics, but assistant explaining and garnering the community's support during Planning Board. So, I just want to make sure, can the, as a group that is working under the board, can they promote something that's on the warrant? Like, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, well, they're going to be asking the town.
The board for their.
What they're asking the town specifically is just for the board to have the ability to sell the property, not necessarily to advocate for one party or another, although the intention is to have confidence that the proposal that they have would be the one they'll go with. So, yes, they can advocate for a particular group if they would like, but that's not necessarily what they're asking.
Okay, all right.
Right. Justine, the way I would clarify it is, we really mean to educate people ahead of town meeting, because I think when people are making big decisions like this, the more they know ahead of time, the more comfortable they feel voting in the affirmative to sell something like this. So, that's really what we meant, if, you know, by that language.
Yeah, it was looking, it almost looked a little bit like lobbying, because obviously, but almost that type of thing.
Right, right.
So, I was just trying to clarify.
Yeah, I would say part of that is that the lot really is a difficult lot. To save the park and the sledding hill, there will need to be some variances on lot dimensional setbacks and things like that. And if, for some reason, those fail, it's probably not a sellable lot, and rezoning would have to occur or something like that. So, a lot hinges on that piece of the project, so.
And that's just really education of the Planning Board and why we would need their assistance and why, if there's a town meeting vote required on that, you know, educating the public to prepare them for why that's important going forward.
Correct. And while normally a developer would apply for the, you know, if they needed a variance, they would apply. In this case, it doesn't behoove the developer at all. It's simply to save parkland for us, so we thought we would be proactive and explain that to the Planning Board and CBA. Did you want to add anything?
No, that seems good.
Moral support. All right, so the motion again was to approve amended charge for the Coolidge School Property Working Group as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
Nope, I'm not going to read it again. So, all those in favor of extending the charge and the new charge? Thank you. Thanks for all your work. You were ready. I know you were ready.
I'll be there. See you tomorrow.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mark. All right, so this is a motion to approve access by David Mark to the Asbit River in order to place paint river height markings adjacent to the Main Street Bridge at 125 Main Street, pending requesters' consent to indemnify the town and adhere to guidance from town officials. Do we have a second?
Second.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everything?
Good.
You jumping the river and paint?
Asking permission first.
So, our, so all we, we don't have anything to do with the wall. We just have the river bed.
Yes.
So, I mean, that's, and the wall belongs to the person that's above it.
No, the state. No, the river belongs to the state.
It's on the other side. It's on John's Cleaners side.
It's on the cleaner's side.
Bottom of the river belongs to the town. The water belongs to the state. The wall belongs to the people who own the John's Cleaners building all the way down.
And they'll go with it?
And I spoke to them again today. They are perfectly happy.
Just paint the soccer field.
Can I ask, David, why?
I was going to ask the soccer.
That's all our question.
Just for, you know, I've been to towns that have the, you know, the high watermark was here, and you know.
Okay. First, sort of doing high watermarks, but inside that gets sort of complicated to explain. So, it's just to raise awareness of the river and to make Maynard a little bit more interesting. So, as you walk by on Main Street Bridge and you're walking towards that wall, you see markers are marked one, two, three, up to 10.
Yep.
And the waters are varying height, and you realize, in modern-day recordings, it's been as low as under one foot and as high as nine, almost nine feet. So, that's the range, and it would just show, you know, how deep the river is. It's educational.
Do you know through your historical research what the high watermark is at that location?
The official high watermark at the gauge which is behind 711 is 8.94 feet in 1955.
Oh.
Now, this is a different spot.
Right.
But that's the highest, and so there's one almost nine feet. There have been two floods that hit eight feet, two more floods that hit seven feet. This is over 80 years of records. And then other floods are, you know, five to six feet.
There was, and this is sort of off-topic, but there was a time within the last 12 years that we had to declare an emergency in town.
Yes.
Because the river was so close to the bottom of the bridge, and the fear was that the water was going to overflow on the side of Jimmy's building and rush down Main Street.
This has happened five or six times. It happened in 68. It happened in 87. Both those floods were eight feet at the gauge. The flood you're referring to was 2010, and it was seven feet at the gauge, and it was about a foot under the Main Street Bridge.
Yeah, and I was, you know, we were very concerned. We had to actually declare an emergency for the town in anticipation of it overflowing. Never did, thank God, but that was the fear, and so I was just curious as to.
These water markers would not affect how high the water gets.
Yeah. I know.
That's good. I like that.
Okay, so I'm just asking for permission. I'll sign a waiver. I'll provide my own paint.
Yeah.
So, technically, you're asking for permission because you have to stand on town property in order to paint on private property.
Yeah.
Yes. And it's the river. You know, if I was in the river and no one knew about this, the police might hear about it and say.
Wonder what you're doing over there.
Who are you? What are you doing over there?
Okay.
You may see David whitewater rafting.
No, he will not be seeing me whitewater.
Actually, that's the point.
Maybe dumping water on myself.
When the water's between two and a half and three and a half feet at the gauge, I've seen canoes head right through the center, kayaks head through the center of Maynard. Any lower, they hit bottom. Any higher, they hit bridges.
Careful.
Okay. No, so as long as everything's in order, once, you know, before we start.
Do we have a consent form or something for him to sign, or a liability or something?
Yeah, that's.
We're going to do liability releases.
Actually, you do, because I use the town consent form when we're planting daffodils up at a marble.
There you go.
So, there is a town farm on Town Stationery.
This is a little bit more dangerous than planting daffodils.
Yes, this is more dangerous than painting daffodils.
I don't know.
How's the book come?
Not quite as far as I'd like, moving along.
That's right.
Different topic.
Still has time.
So, yeah, you got to get the book in, the painting, all this by the beginning of the sesquicentennial, and fit it all in, but no, I appreciate it. Forward to seeing the river heights. So, unless anybody has any more questions, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to paint the name, too? No.
Now, do you want to? No, do you want just Kate?
Must have pissed me off.
That's funny. Hi, Kate.
Hi, Kate.
How are you guys?
Welcome back, gentlemen. When last we met, we had so much fun.
You had us back.
All right.
So, we're talking about basically one item left, which is the location item. So.
That's right, and if you, if you permit me, Mr. Chair, the two remaining, I guess, red lines are in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 paragraph on the first page, and it just says the location to be subsequently approved by the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Section 3. And then the critical piece is Section 3, where I've kind of defined what your authority is to approve the location after these folks find one.
Which document are you referring to?
I'm referring to the one that's called.
Host community agreement?
It's New Can Retail, No Location.
No Location, exactly.
Thank you.
No Location.
So, this is what we talked about before, where it's a conditional approval, where we would send the host agreement, and then they would come back to us with the location, and then we would ratify it or not ratify it pending that location and further discussion.
Exactly correct. Exactly correct. So, this gives you total unfettered authority to deny for any reason if you feel uncomfortable with the location. And we tried to give the language as much strength to the Board of Selectmen's decision-making authority on that aspect.
I will say, I did have someone approach me concerned, even with this language in the contract, that it could still be construed as a gray area. And it's not strong enough for us. I mean, I look at it, and it looks like it's pretty solid, and I have faith in you and your expertise, so.
Thank you.
You've done this a few times.
So, there's that.
So, there's that.
No, I think this, I mean, I, you know, obviously, you guys, you're the expert, and as far as I can tell, it meets what we requested.
Well, we didn't really request that. We actually requested for them to come back with a. With a location. With a location. That's not what happened.
Well, no.
Oh, I thought.
No, we asked, we, we asked, failing a location, we asked for a document that gives us what this gives us in this section, whether or not anybody.
Yep. My thoughts remain the same. I am not comfortable putting us in any position where anything could, and even despite Council's guidance, I would much prefer for the protection of the community to have a location known so the community can speak about it and know about it and talk about it before we have just somebody come up, and I know that everyone can say, oh, that can happen. I never know what can happen with appeals courts, with, you know, whatever. So, this is the first time it would happen in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I don't think with a burgeoning business like the marijuana industry, I just don't think that it's safe for us at this point to be the first to be stepping out on the edge.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, because I want to double-check with what we talked about last time, though, is essentially, even though we, if we do sign this, if we do sign the quote-unquote "no location" contract, it still is kind of like signing a location contract, because they still have to come back to us for that approval before they can go any further, correct?
They have to come back to you for approval on the location.
Understood, but there might be an area of, first off, my response would be that if we're asking questions about could-be's, would-be's, whatever, then it's not completely solid, sock-rol- sock-rock solid for my purposes.
I was just trying to clarify.
I get it.
That that's.
But beyond that, there could be some, as we sit here today, there could be some unknown appeal that is filed with the court. These guys will say, oh, we'll never appeal it. We'll never appeal it.
There's no appeal avenue. It's a discretionary decision. There's no mechanism to appeal.
It's just an agreement, saying that we are willing and looking forward to doing business with them pending a location that we then in the future approve. Like, I think the best analogy was what I brought up last time. It's similar to getting pre-approved for a mortgage. It doesn't mean you're necessarily going to get that mortgage if your ducks aren't in a row. So, they still have to come back to us, and we still have the power, but we're saying, you know, in good faith and as, you know, good business partners, we want you in our town, and we're willing to work with you and give you this while you find a location, and we still have final say on that location.
And look, I understand that part, and it's very clear, obviously, but I have a difficult time understanding they're, they want to get in business. It's a business. So, to me, why wouldn't you want to get the location first before you're interested in getting a license to start a business, like any other business? Don't usually people get a location before they, you know, come for an approval for a license? It's not the other way around. They don't come for a license and then go get the place.
So, if I may?
Sure.
It's a different kind of business, is why.
I understand that. No, it's still a business. That's the way I look at it.
So, essentially, if there's a location required, you're guaranteeing between six and 18 months of rent, and certainly, you know, the opportunity to vet the location. This actually adds an additional review of the location that some of the select people said earlier they wish they had done when they had signed a previous host community agreement. So, you're in fact, again, getting to vet the location once at the host community agreement level, and then that gets you nowhere in terms of going through the local zoning approval process. So, you would in fact, you have powers in this version of the document that you wouldn't otherwise.
Right, we basically have veto power, which we wouldn't give in a normal host agreement. So, I feel like it protects our citizens more because we have that. So, they come back to us with a location, and we don't like it. We can say, see you later. You know, we're going to the next people on the list.
So, this really is a policy decision. And you're right, in essence, the more traditional approach is to have a location built into the agreement. It's the most conservative thing, because you're signing a document that's essentially complete. You have a clear picture when you're signing the document. This agreement as written does exactly that. It provides veto power to say, okay, essentially, once they've gone through the process and have exhausted the CCC process, and they come back to you with a location, it would be as if you didn't sign a host community agreement if you found the location unsuitable for whatever reason. And either they would work with you to find a new location or not. So, and on the cannabis side, communities have treated it really differently across the board. So, there have been communities that completely prohibit marijuana. You know, those are clear. But there are also communities that have allowed marijuana with absolutely no regulations. I have a client who didn't do any zoning, didn't do any licensure bylaw, and the only tool they have is the host community agreement. So, there are those communities. So, the range of possibilities are really wide. And this is a policy question for you all to decide as to whether or not you want to proceed in, yes, a non-traditional, along a non-traditional path.
If I may, just one thing you said, we can't apply to the state until we have a host community agreement with a location.
Yeah, we know that.
Okay.
Oh, right, yeah, sorry. I didn't mean to say that. Yes. They're not going to go through the CCC process. So, this just allows them not to have the location.
And that's what they're looking for, so they can start the process, basically.
Yes.
I wouldn't even classify this as non-traditional, considering this business has been operational in the state for six months. Like, we don't have a timeline enough to establish tradition, so the fact that other towns have, you know, chosen locations.
Yeah, true.
But I'd also point out that Maynard is a tiny town. We've limited our zoning, so your potential for locations is limited as well.
Yeah, that's true, too.
And also, I'll just raise the, and I understand your discomfort with setting precedent, but this truly would make the decision for future municipalities. And the intent of New Can is for this construct to set precedent to expressly benefit people who the state statute intends to benefit in this industry. And unfortunately, frankly, I think because of a lot of abuse by other communities on the host community agreement process in terms of basically asking for more than the statute allows and being emboldened by the fact that the State Cannabis Control Commission refused to review the substance of those contracts, I don't understand that at all. Who else would look at them? But that's neither here nor there. The point is, this would set precedent for people who have less means than New Can. It would allow people from the economic empowerment community, the social equity community, and this very small business community to have a chance to get into this industry. And again, the statutory language says, we as a society in Massachusetts disproportionately enforced cannabis prohibition against certain people and certain groups and certain communities, 29 of which were identified. You know, the barriers of entry and the lowering of those barriers of entry, if you had a location for your host community agreement, is, can't be understated. host community agreement, is, can't be understated. So, on the one hand, I understand you want to protect your sys- your citizens. I agree 100% that this is more protection than if you didn't have a location for your host community agreement. Um, and I would just say frankly, you would get good press from this. Um, not that that should be a motivating factor, but you will be applauded, perhaps nationwide. It's...
But, it's just the thing, we're, we're not looking to make history. We're definitely not looking to make history with this.
We got enough problem with, we got enough problem with the press.
We appreciate, I appreciate, I appreciate the, the sentiment. Um, but when, when push comes to shove, we're the ones who live in this town, and we represent the people who live in this town, and we want to protect this town. So ultimately, that's what we're looking for, as opposed to making a statement, a larger, um, statement regarding cannabis retailers, et cetera.
And I'll just reiterate that this is an additional layer of protection that you don't otherwise have.
Right. So, well, in theory, and again, I'm, I, I personally feel okay with what, um, what Attorney Federoff has, has written up for this. Um, but I will say that in theory, our other host community agreements up until now have all had, uh, so we've all, we've, it, it's kind of six in one hat, dozen the other, the other, in my opinion, because I feel like the, the host community agreements in the past have had a location. This is going to have a location just one more step. So, so in my mind, it's kind of the exact same thing. Um, so, so we're really not, I don't, I don't feel like we're making it easier, but maybe, maybe someone else sees it differently. So, that's...
Well, I, I've taken the opportunity to speak to residents about it, and, uh, I've not heard anybody who thinks it's a good idea to not know. Uh, and I understand the whole implication that this might be an additional layer, but nobody wants us to be the, uh, you know, nobody wants us to make national, international news, national news. That's not, that's not the motivation of me. Um, and I haven't heard any resident say, hey, look, we can be on the forefront of Time Magazine. That's not, that's not the goal. So that was not really a, an incentive for me. Um, I just am listening to my constituents, and my constituents have said conservative with this.
See, I, and I, I, I hear from the, the same, similar constituents, and I, and I understand that, but again, what I'm, what I'm struggling with, the difference between the two, is the fact that ultimately, there will be a location before it leaves our hands. There, there isn't a location right now.
Well, when it comes, when it comes back.
But then they have to come back. So they can't, they can't move any, they can't move forward, and correct me if I'm wrong.
That's true.
They cannot move forward without coming back to us with a location that we will then approve.
They need a location for the CCC filing. That's true.
Right, and they need a location...
So this is what I don't understand. So what's the purpose behind this whole exercise?
So they can save money off with a, with a, a...
I mean, I'm, I'm having a difficult time understanding...
They can save money with, with a landlord, that they go to a landlord and they'll say, oh, it's a marijuana place. And this is, this is not for our benefit that they're doing this, I do not believe. It's not, it's for their benefit, because they want to save money. And they're putting us in a position where we have to make an uncomfortable situ- an uncomfortable decision for our residents for their benefit, not for ours. That's my cons- that's one of my concerns.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
Sure.
It is, it affords the town an additional layer of protection.
Yeah, we know that.
Two meetings ago, you heard from the town administrator, he wished it had been done this way with one of the prior applicants. So I understand the other two host community agreements weren't executed that way, but he, he was very clear that he wished they had this option. The, the issue is, throughout the Commonwealth, there are landlords who say, you need a letter or a document from me to go in front of the municipality. And if you want that, you got to give us $10,000 up front. We're talking to a landlord who wants $24,400 up front in a different community, with $15,000 is forfeited day one. I mean, it, it is a paradigm that doesn't work. This affords you not less control, but more control. You've, you will, the host community agreement means that you've selected the team, you're comfortable with us, we have the deal in place, we get that signed, and then we go out to find the location. And then we have to come back to you. And the, the language Kate proposed, I believe, um, because I don't have a copy in front of me, states the document has no value until you've approved it and then send us off to the planning board. So you have more control, not less control. You now have the ability to bifurcate the decision between the team as well as the location. So if we come back and you don't like the location, we go out and we have to find a different location, versus what you went through before, which was a team that came in and said, we're the team, we're within the zone, and you found yourselves in a situation of approving them. We're giving you more control over that.
That's what I want to add, too, though. That's what...
Are you really giving us more control? Because in my opinion, if you come to us and you have a location, and we don't like it, we don't sign the agreement, so...
And then they, but we're still saying...
Yeah, but now you've, if you like...
Yeah, but, yeah, but now, now you've expended the cost of doing business, which the cost of doing business in marijuana in Massachusetts is, you get the location, you go to the community, and you're responsible for the rent at that location until you sign the deal. My, the cost of your doing business is not the town and manager's responsibility.
Absolutely, I agree.
So, so I, I have the ultimate control, or we have the ultimate control regardless, in either case. We, either you bring the location, if we don't like it, we don't sign the agreement, or we go through this, um, process that, you know, you guys, that we talked to Kate about before, and we sign this, and then you go and you get a location, you come back, if we don't like it, we don't sign the agreement.
I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, save for one point. This way, you're, you're allowed to pick the team. The way it works in Massachusetts right now, the selectmen do not pick the teams, the landlord picks the teams. So the only people that you have seen to date are people who have been able to cut a deal with a landlord, versus being able to see, we want to see why...
We still can't, we still don't have to give them a host community agreement, even if they have a place.
Yeah, but, but what about the ones that you don't even, that could be a better operator, that you're more comfortable with?
Yeah, well, I see what you're saying.
You made the comment last time, we want to give you folks a host community agreement, go find a location. But if we don't find a landlord that we can cut a deal with, and you, and let's say hypothetically that we are a better operator for Maynard, you may not get that better operator, because we're stuck with the landlord issue. All we're suggesting is reverse it. It's a logical situation. It gives you more control, because now you have two layers of approval. The first one in approving us as a team, the second one in approving the location, and the way Kate structured the document, and we gave her zero pushback on this. There was no negotiation. It was in line with what we talked about last time. We said that, that is what we discussed. We accepted it. The doc, there's a clause in there that states, I believe, the document doesn't have any value until we find the location, come back, and you approve it. All it does is, on our end, it says, you've approved our team, you've gone through the due diligence, we have the financial deal in, in place with the municipality, now go out and find your location.
It almost seems like they're trying to work more efficiently, because if you, if you have a host community agreement, the traditional way, and correct me if I'm wrong, if you have a host community agreement the traditional way, and we don't agree with the location, then that person has to then turn around and go back and come up with an entire new host community agreement, a tire new, which should be the same.
Yeah.
But this is almost, this document itself is floating, so you have it, then if they come forward, they, we don't like the location, like he said, they leave and come back with just the location. So it, it's almost like there's less paperwork. I don't know if that's...
I don't know if it's less paperwork, but it's just, it's a different approach.
So, so let me ask you this. So let's say, for example, we sign this agreement, and you go find a place, and you have to sign a, a contract there, right, a lease?
Well, you think what we're going to do immediately is come back to you.
And you have to pay, you have to give, you have to put some kind of a deposit or whatever you have to do, right? So let's say you come back to us, and you say, well, we're not going to approve the location. Now you lost that money anyway.
Well, because we're going to come back to you and say, we, oh, can we get this location approved? Then we're going to go back out and get the document signed. Right, it, it is, I mean, we can do that very, very quickly.
Are you going to get, you mean, you're not going to sign the document with the landlord before you come to us?
No, we're going to sign the document with the landlord unless the landlord says, if you want my signature, you're going to give me 10, 14, 15, $24,000. It, it is turned into a situation throughout the Commonwealth, the landlords are making the decisions. The landlords decide who you see, because if the landlord has five applicants...
Well, why don't you go find a place and buy one, then, as opposed to renting it? You guys were talking about that at one point, didn't you say about buying a place?
We're looking at a lot of places right now.
Do you have any luck? I'm, I'm honestly...
Honestly, we have had some luck. We had one we were close on, but the, uh, it, it was a situation I don't want to get into in a public forum, but, um, and it's consistent with what our, our concerns have been. Right, the, um, again, this gives you more control. So, Selectman Gavin, if you're concerned about your constituents saying, well, you've opened something up, the document gives us no rights at all. Kate was clear to put that in there. We have no rights until we come back to you with a location that you approve. So we can't go to court. There's no avenue for us to pursue anything until we have satisfied this body that we've got a location that you're comfortable with. So you don't end up with, you ended up with, in one of the prior situations where the team and the location came in, married together, and you approved it, saying, well, we really didn't like the location.
I mean, I, I honestly don't understand the issue and saying how this is detrimental to Maynard. I mean, they're looking for something, and they're saying this consideration, they're going to give us veto power, which is something we don't normally have. So to me, that makes it a stronger deal and more better, I mean, a much better deal for Maynard to go forward with this. That's why I just don't see what the issue is. I mean, that's how a contract and a negotiation works, and the language in the contract is unambiguous. There's no room for them to say, if we don't approve their location, we're in breach of the contract and giving them an avenue to enforce a contract. We have complete control in the upper hand, the way Kate drafted it.
Right, which is what we talked about last time. We weren't trying to do an enron, an enrun around here. We, we, we're very comfortable with having to find the location, come back to this body to say, is this location acceptable?
Right, and if we say no, they have to live with it, or they have to go somewhere else, or find somewhere else.
Right, well, the contract states what we have to do. If you say, if you say no, right, if we come back and Ms. St. John says, no, 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 we don't like that location, because you gave us guidance on our second meeting here, and say, no, that's not where we want it, then we go back out and we have to find another one. Right, and we have no right of recourse, we have no right of appeal. It is, it, you have to be satisfied with the location, which gives you, I don't want to say two bites at the apple, but you have two rights of approval here. You approve the team and the deal, and then you say, now go find the location. Right? And versus, we come in with it all together, and you say, well, we really don't like that location. It's not on a corner we like, but, uh, it's all wrapped in together. We, we don't have the right to bifurcate it. You're picking up an additional right, an additional ability to review and approve.
Kate, 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 Kate.
No, and I, I, so I think it's...
So...
Okay, sorry.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm not going to interrupt you. Go ahead.
What I was going to say is, I think it doesn't give you any more authority. It just, it just takes it in two parts. Um, so it gives you the opportunity to deal with, uh, a potential business owner who might not have the opportunity and may be beneficial to the community, depending upon what you think about the team. I, and that's really a decision the board has to make, um, because some of these applicants have been precluded because of financial reasons. Um, and it's sort of, again, a policy decision. So it's not greater authority, it's just taken in two pieces rather than all at once.
So it's, actually, his, his terminology is two, two opportunities to accept, and I see there's two opportunities to refuse if things don't go the way we want.
That's true. We put in the very serious, we're super triple-serious about this clause.
That's official legal terminology.
It's official legal terminology.
Take that out.
Obviously, obviously, you know, there's, there's, there's no guarantees in life, but you're, you're pretty confident this protects us.
Yeah, we put in, we say the agreement will all avoid, um, if the Board of Selectmen refuses the location. Um, we indicate that this was offered by the applicant, as opposed to being a proposal on our side, which is important for contracts, in that, um, you know, there's some, there is some deference that a court might give to the person who made the offer of the idea. Um, so, so we've really tried to make it super-solid and, and ensure that there's no backing out of that, full and unfettered discretion of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
And if I may, I, I'm a former litigator, and it's sort of my job to poke holes in arguments. That provision is ironclad. I don't see any crack of light with, in which to make even a plausible legal argument, that it's not a self-contained poison pill if you don't approve the location.
I mean, I second that as a current litigator.
Which is why we have you on the board.
Well, it's okay. All right, so, um, there isn't, I mean, it's just a discussion at this point, so we have the two. It's a discussion, there's no motion, um...
Oh, and then it's determined if the board would prefer to have a business location identified prior to entry.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not a motion for it, but...
So when would we approve if we're going to...
Put it on the next agenda.
They were going to put it on the next agenda, if it's ready.
Okay.
You're not planning on making any further changes to this contract, right? This is like the final draft.
No further, no further changes.
So the chairman?
Jeff wants to make a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, I just wanted to point out that by allowing them to not have an empty storefront for X number of months, that's one less empty storefront that's in town for X number of months. And I also just wanted to be at least one constituent for Selectman Gavin, who is not among that other pool, so that if it's vetted out by town council, then you're giving them what they've asked for. Um, it makes sense to me. So I just wanted to be one voice on that call, so.
So I just asked a question before Jess spoke, and just, Kate has no further changes to make to the contract. So on the future agenda, if we were to approve it, the version that we have would be the version that we're voting on?
Yeah, okay.
Which is the no-location version.
The no-location draft, right.
If you were inclined to take a vote tonight, you could, based on this, it would just have to be finalized for signature. It's up, I don't, it's up to you.
I don't believe that the agenda allowed for anything but a discussion.
So how is it?
It's, it's written as a discussion. I didn't, we didn't, we weren't sure.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a discussion. I mean, so we've had the discussion...
I would like the community to have an opportunity to hear this and come back with other comments.
I'm, I'm not pressuring you, I agree.
Yeah, no, but I'm concerned also about people who would say, why'd you vote when it said discussion on the agenda? If I knew it said vote, I would have been there.
It's not a hearing.
Right, I mean, it doesn't matter if they're hearing or not.
So anyways, it's okay. We, we'll put on a, a next, a next agenda, um, and then we'll, we'll...
So, for the next agenda, do you want just the no-location version?
Yeah.
For your consideration?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, either decide, we'll either decide to do that or not do that, yeah.
Right, so, right, the motion will be to approve the host community agreement. Right, and then you can deny that if, if so, but, right.
Well, you should also put the other one...
Unless they have a location by the time the, the next meeting is held. Are you working at it still?
Well, we have been working at it.
So I, I would suggest...
I'm, I'm a bit confused, because it was pointed out to me that, um, you know, we have another, a fourth business that has come to us. They were able to find a business, a location, a location.
I don't, I, we, we have some knowledge of that, and I don't want to get into...
I don't understand. You guys have been out this for, what, three months?
Sure, you have somebody who came in with a lot of money, who offered above a listing price for a property. Right, exactly what we're talking about.
But I also think that's a presumptuous thing, too, because they've now acquired this location with the presumption that we're going to approve their host agreement.
Well, that doesn't mean we're going to approve the host agreement.
I just said it's a presumption, though, but I, I think what the whole point of this is, is that the marijuana industry in the state has been cornered by wealthy and privileged people who can afford to go into that industry, and this, in a greater sense, could open it up to lower revenue businesses who could afford to start the business and get into the industry.
It's actually five people, because two have been on the same piece of property, for what it's worth. But, that's a whole different story. Um, so if you could put on the next agenda, Megan, please, um, the no-location and the with-location, in the event that the no-location doesn't succeed, we'll go and vote on the in the event that the no-location doesn't succeed, we'll go and vote on the next one. Okay? Please. Other than that, you know, you guys got to realize that this is a small town, and you're not doing this for our benefit, and we realize that, so stop trying to tell us this is for our benefit. It's for your benefit and solely your benefit. Maybe some of the people in Maynard will experience some, some relief from pain or other things in the purchase, but as far as the business end of it goes, this is for your benefit. This is not for Maynard's benefit, at that point. Maybe down the road, with, with some of the tax implications and whatnot, it becomes more for our benefit, but right now, this is for your benefit, not ours.
Understood.
So, understand that we realize that. But that's all.
All right. We appreciate you coming back again.
Glad I like, you guys should be glad I like you.
We are.
I like you guys.
All right, we'll keep you informed, David, we'll tell you what it is.
Thank you.
We actually, we do appreciate your coming back every time.
Our enthusiasm?
Yes, you get points for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The old saying, guys, never give up.
Gentlemen, hey, you staying?
I think so, I think so.
You did that application, right?
Yes.
All right, so, so now we have, right, let me just, the updates to the retailers' rules and regulations for both, right? Yes, that's correct. Both retailers, okay.
We see it on non-retail.
Right, and then we have the review of the license application?
That's right.
Yeah.
So we've already gone through, and this is just acceptance of what we've already done, I think?
Yeah.
Were there any additional changes to this beyond what we discussed the last time? Nothing? We just sort of codified or written, wrote up what we had talked about.
Yeah, there were no changes. I think last time, as a matter of sheer fact, I simply answered questions, so there were no changes that I can recall.
Mr. Jarrett, can I, the only thing that we, there's no changes to the documents, but we did solicit input on the regulations, and the first item, cannabis rules and regulations and HCA feedback in your packet outlines the responses that we received from posting it on the website.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The first one was really fun.
I don't know if you want me to address any of those concerns, or you're good?
No.
Man, it's pretty self-explanatory, right?
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
Like, I'm not, you know, it's not funny, but it's, it's interesting that, you know, this has been ongoing for so long, and we've had public hearings and other things, and there's been nobody there, and now...
See the first one?
It's okay. So, we want to, so those are the questions, those three questions, which none of them are anything earth-shattering, anything that would really affect the regulations.
Right.
So, there's two, three, there's actually three different motions, the first of which says, move to accept the marijuana regulations for retail establishments. There was a second.
Second?
Okay. And the second says, move to accept the marijuana regulations for non-retail establishments. Do a second for that one.
Second.
Thank you, David. And the last one, which is the next actual agenda item, says, motion to accept and approve the cannabis control application. Do a second for that one.
Second.
Thank you, David. All right, so, I only did it that way so we can discuss all three, and then we can vote separately, but it's, it's what we've, what we've been working on for almost two years, a year and a half, two years, a while.
The only other comment I, I recall actually now is on the other establishments, non-retail. I'm not sure, my recollection is terrible from the last meeting, but did you all sign off on, on deleting those highlighted portions that I had taken from, we had? Okay, so that was done. All right. Megan, you did that.
Yes, you can see it in item five.
Ah, perfect.
That highlights, that shows the highlights, but in item...
They're gone.
One. According to you, it shows that without those.
Ah, okay, perfect.
You're talking about the things that you thought were sort of duplicate, and it was already addressed in the state statute.
That's exact, and you didn't need it for the cultivators, because it was mostly dealing with customers, so I deleted them from the retail, from, yes.
Yes.
We're on the same page.
Okay. So, does anyone have any questions, and who will we ask? Okay, so, all right.
Have we got to vote separately?
Yeah, we have to vote separately, and the first motion was to accept, accept the marijuana regulations for retail establishments. Before we vote, does anyone have any questions on those regulations, which is already decided on before?
No.
All those in favor? And the second one was to accept the marijuana regulations for non-retail establishments. Does anyone have any questions about non-retail establishment regulations? All those in favor? Thank you. And the final one was a motion to accept and approve the cannabis control application, which is the license, the license application.
My only thing is, if the law changes, or the state provides regulations, like a tips version of marijuana, you know, selling, you'll update the application and keep an eye on that.
Yeah, yeah.
People have to, like, provide that.
Yeah, I'm following all that, because as a matter of sheer fact, right now, there's draft regulations to incorporate the medical, and so I'm following all that stuff, and if, if there are changes, I'll keep you, keep you all apprised.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Sorry, that was my question.
It's okay, it's a good question. Anybody else have any questions? So, basically, in the state of Massachusetts, there's really no complete regulations yet, in a sense.
Everything's subject to change, right? So everything's complete at this point, but they're contemplating changes as we speak.
Right, so, so, the truth of the matter is, all these things that we talked about for the last half hour to 45 minutes are subject to possible change at any moment, and could just completely change all of them.
You may still see me again.
It's okay, you're always welcome, you know? We have other issues, we have other issues coming, but, so, anyways, like, you know, it's just an interesting, you know, in every community that has voted for this is going through the same thing, so it's, it's just an interesting, it was an interesting article I read that says, yeah, you're doing all this work for nothing, but...
Yeah.
You know, it kind of suggests that there's a lot of communities doing a lot of work and a lot of effort into, putting a lot of effort into these things, and, you know, based on the vote of, you know, several dozen people, the whole thing could change in, in a matter of minutes, but...
We're really well-prepared for the next 35 seconds.
Yeah, okay. So let's vote in the next 35 seconds to accept and approve the cannabis control application. All those in favor? All right. Okay, I think that's it.
All right. Do you want me to hang around for the next group, or am I...
Yeah, if you'd like to, you know, just to see what...
I'm happy to.
Your insight is always...
Cultivation Experts LLC.
You can hang around for any talk.
Okay, I'm happy to do it.
No, no, I'll get out of here, I'll sit back. I'll sit back, it's okay.
So it was you guys they were talking about.
Maybe. Well, yet to be discovered.
Thanks, Kate.
Thanks, Kate.
Thanks, Kate.
I'd like to thank the board and town staff for the opportunity tonight. My name is Stephen Farr. I reside at 31 Yule Avenue in Lexington, so kind of a neighbor. And my partner?
I'm Gabriel, I reside in Worcester currently.
We're in Lexington?
Yule Ave.
Yule Ave.
What's your last name, Gabriel?
Medina, I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right, do you guys have a presentation that we can all see, or is it just verbal?
We have paperwork that was, was that distributed?
Yeah, it's, it's on...
Which is basically an introduction.
It's on a packet.
Yeah.
Do you have anything for the, for the...
At this moment, I mean, we can pull something up, but we were not prepared for that.
All right, no, that's fine.
I think tonight, we just wanted to introduce ourselves, let you know that a lot of thought went into why we would like to join the community here in Maynard and be part of moving forward with this business. It's kind of a prickly path, as we were listening to earlier, but, call me old-fashioned, but this is a business where compliance is everything. It's required, there's already issues in the state of people who are trying to deviate from compliance, and that's not what we're here for. We've found a location here in town that we think would be very suitable, and we've also considered something that a lot of towns have been dealing with, is trying to find a location that would not cause traffic problems and that would fit in with the community. So, that's where we've already entered into, and we've started the process of investing in the community and showing the kind of commitment that we're willing to make to be able to move forward, and that's we've entered into a 20-year lease at 39 Rear Main Street. And I've already met with architect Tim Haas yesterday, preparing so that as we work with the different departments to make sure that this is a good fit for everyone, he's had input already of how we could enhance the situation there to make it work well. So tonight, we just wanted to, you know, make ourselves known and start the process and try to do it in a way that I understood you were supposed to do it, which is find a location and then proceed.
Thank you. Can I ask you, in addition to speaking with Tim, who we all know, have you spoken to the potential neighbors?
I did, I went next door where I think they're going to be a great neighbor, because they make really good tacos. Talked with the owner's wife, discussed with her a couple of the challenges that we would have, particularly, the, the commission is not going to want our customer to come out the front door and then go sit down and have a beer in the beer garden, and, you know, so we've already looked at that with Tim, talked to the neighbor, to come up with something that makes sense. Because, looking at the demographics, we're probably going to be sharing a lot of customers with them.
Have you spoken to the folks?
What about Open Table?
Folks at Open, Open Table? Have you spoken to the folks at the...
No, no.
Do you have a board member here from Open Table? I just, everyone's aware. I have to be blunt with you, I think this is a terrible location. This is why I think part of that location thing is really important in terms of having a host agreement, and why maybe holding off on a location makes more sense. That's an area of town where traffic is terrible, parking is scarce, we've seen from other towns just how much volume comes from pot dispensaries, you know, and even when the fad dies down, I still think it's going to be an issue, and I just don't see that personally as a viable location. I don't know if my board members feel differently, but for me, like, right off the bat, I don't think there's much you could say to convince me that that could be a viable location.
Well, the other, the other thing is, honestly, because there's obviously other, two other retailers that right now have, have, we have signed host community agreements with, in that location, you would potentially be the third location within 700 feet of each other. And that's, that's kind of saturated for a downtown that's the size of a quarter mile.
And, of course, that's something we had to consider, because the area where we can go is limited, and where there are empty spaces. So what we tried to do was balance, you know, when, when I look at the locations on Main Street with no parking at all, I don't know how they're going to function. Now, I do think that, you know, all the long lines and all this, and, you know, that's going to be over soon. I mean, my understanding is, right now, there's 270-some retail applications in process at the state. Once they start spreading out, this is just going to be a nice little business. It's not going to be having people standing in lines and such. And if, if I was looking at the potential of some empty spaces in that huge parking lot with over 100 spaces, I think, versus a Main Street location with zero, it's the best that we could come up with.
Just from a viability standpoint, though, there's already three people in line ahead of you for a town that's 10,000 people. I don't understand how it would be viable, you know, to open a fourth marijuana, I mean, one, we don't have a host agreement with, so I understand that, but I don't understand viability-wise, why you think, you know, you'd get the business and it would be a smart business decision. And I say that as a local business owner, you know, I wouldn't open a law firm in a town with four other law firms that's this size.
Well, and I think, too, the natural limitation of that, there's can only be one for, you know, the 20% rule based on liquor stores.
I, I've been making the point to a lot of people relative to, I don't understand where the market is when you've got, you know, if you've got one store versus, you know, a lot of people are making a big deal about, oh, there's, there's tax revenue here for the town. Well, guess what? You know, you have five beers, you have five beers, and you can only sell, you know, you're only going to sell what the market will bear, regardless of if there's 100 stores or two stores. The market is the market, and I think that in a small town, our market is going to be, you know, sort of limited. But anyway, I know the surrounding towns and everything else, and I'm not opposed, I want to make the point, as I do every time we talk about this topic, I'm not opposed to the, the sale of marijuana. I voted for it, and I think that there's huge medicinal value to it, and I think it's about time that that was opened up to the people who need it. So, I have no qualms at all about the sale of the product. I agree with my colleagues relative to this particular location, for a number of reasons, some of which have been stated, some of which have not, but it's, it's concerning to me, that particular location specifically, one of the reasons, is its proximity to a very popular restaurant that, that is frequented by a lot of young kids. And I understand there's liquor stores right next door, too, but again, this is a burgeoning industry that we, that people are uncomfortable with, and it's, I don't want to scare away potential customers from an established business that is there because of a burgeoning business that scares people away. So, I'm a bit concerned about the proximity to Open Table as well, for various reasons. The parking issue is a concern, even though I agree with the statement that you made, that this location probably, from a parking's perspective, is a lot better than some of the ones that are, one of the two that, that has been, that is in the pipeline. But, for many reasons, I'm concerned about that particular location, but I'll hear what other people have to say, and once the residents get a chance to understand, this is the first where they've heard of this, I'd like to hear their feedback, too, relative to what they think about that particular location.
I know a lot of times I try to go park down there, and I can't find parking behind there, so I'm not saying that, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like, you know, you're going to have as much parking as, I mean, the picture looks nice with no cars in the lot.
On a Friday night, on a Friday night, it's taken up by...
It's every, it's almost every, it's almost every night now, that lot, that lot does look nice on a Saturday afternoon at about noon time, 1:00, and looks pretty good on a Sunday afternoon, but Monday through Friday, daytime or nighttime, that lot is fairly well congested, because you've got, to your point, you know, that the, many of the businesses on Main Street have one or two spots in front of their store, or their, or their shop, or their restaurant, and then they're parking out back. The restaurants, same thing, there's three or four spots, you've got a restaurant that seats 50 or 60 people, they've got to park out in that back parking lot, I mean, it's, it's not as though it's a open and available parking lot. It's public, so anyone could park there, but there's a lot of businesses that are already there that have a difficult time meeting their parking needs, including the, your closest business, which is the one that you didn't talk to, which is Open Table, and they have a, a very difficult time with parking as it is, and this would only increase the, you know, their troubles and create a greater hardship on them. And that's not a group that really deserves to have a hardship placed on them.
If you look at our location document at the bottom, it does say we're willing to work with the city on creating a plan to alleviate the parking issue. If you guys have been out to Lester, Lester has a shuttle going from rented parking, specifically for visitors to their, their business, we could arrange something similar if the city deems it necessary.
Hudson, Hudson does the same thing in the next town over.
And just, just FYI, and this is just a pet peeve of mine, is that we're a town, so we're not a city. So, and that's fine, it's just in the, in the, it makes it feel like you don't really know anything about us if you're referring to us as a city.
Well, I mean...
Just, that's just a...
My apologies.
That's just correct.
I'm not a lawyer or anything, so my, my line with the city and the town is, is a bit blurred.
Can I ask you what your experience is in business in general, and in the cannabis industry, and...
So I'm a technology consultant, so I design networks and systems, and I do project management and design build-outs for technology networks for medium-sized companies and small businesses, and then provide consulting on any technology needs they might have, like websites, and giving them resources like that, personally. So that is what I'm doing right now.
Are you a business?
I do not.
Okay.
I work for a small business in Worcester that has been open since 1980 or so. Very close group, we do, we work really hard, and, you know, clients are number one. And, I mean, Steve here, he's not, you know, we're not part of a multi-state conglomerate, we're not trying to push other people out. We are, you know, good old boys from, like, small towns, right? So...
Does Cannamart have any other locations?
No, sir.
No?
This is, because this started with cultivation experts, which my partner started, and he was the one who had the years of experience with growing medical and with doing these kind of things. I actually started out as his landlord, because I bought the building in Worcester, 60,000 square foot industrial building, back in 2000... in Worcester, 60,000 square foot industrial building back in 2016. So I didn't buy the building to get into this business. It just kind of, when we were in the right district, it just kind of happened.
What was your reaction to the comments made by the gentleman before relative to the fact how you found this location?
All right, can I ask one?
No, please. As both a tenant and a landlord, which I'm both, because I started out being the landlord for Cultivation Experts before I bought in and became a partner. We also, in talking with different people, because in the last three months, I have looked at dozens of towns and, and hundreds of buildings trying to find the right fit. And finding a building in a town, it took a lot of years off my life. I tell you, it is stressful because there are so many things that have to go just right. And that was where, when we, when we came here with the proximity where I go back and forth through here, you know, every day going home in Lexington. And with the, now that we're, we're moving ahead with the cultivation in Worcester, it just makes sense that we have a retail location so that we can complete the, the supply and, and chain. But my background, I mean, I started my first business when I was 19 years old, and that was an awful lot of years ago. And that was a clothing store. And my retail experience culminated in Las Vegas, helping a good friend with her turquoise Indian jewelry shop on the strip. So I have, marketing is my background. And with his business experience and with the, the computer systems that we're going to have to put in to make this all work, it's kind of a nightmare. And having an IT guy help with all of those point-to-sale and seed-to-sale and point, it's mind-blowing.
So did these, did these other gentlemen misrepresent what you're all about?
Again, we're in an industry that demands compliance. And again, I'm, you know, again, call me old-fashioned, but we're here to go along with the rules and to work with what you need as a town.
Well, they, like what I'm getting at is they portrayed you as this, this big massive organization.
Maybe there were two people bidding over that same building, so I'm just wondering if they were confused on who ultimately...
And they might not be referring to us.
Yeah, so, okay.
I mean, you know...
I'm just trying to see if, if they're being truthful with us on a lot of things.
Quite frankly, the way that we found that building, I had to go to GIS and look up the owner. And it turned out that George lives a few miles away from me.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, he's in Burlington, just up the road. I stopped over...
Yeah, he's been in here several times.
Yeah, I stopped over and his mother was out in the driveway watering plants. Nice Greek lady. I pulled up in the car with my wife and my two young boys in the back and introduced myself. And the next day, I got a text message from, from George saying, "My mom said you stopped by to see about the building. She said you're a good guy. I want to talk." And that's, that's how we got involved with finding a place that would, we thought would work. We looked at some of the locations on Main Street, and there's some of those locations that will never work for marijuana because the landlords will not rent to marijuana. I've had the door slammed in my face on two. You take those two out of the equation, the only thing that's left would be right next door to the one on Nathan. It just, we were trying to get as far away as we could. Open Table, yes, but they face Main Street. We're facing a whole different direction. And, and like Gabe mentioned, part of the way that we're going to market this, to take advantage of the fact that we can bring in revenue, not just dependent here in Maynard, but we will be marketing to those perimeter towns that have bans in effect. And we'll bring people in, in a van. So we only need one parking place to bring a whole bunch of people into town, which I think is going to have a positive tax revenue impact since these are people as far away as Lexington that will be coming and spending their money and creating tax revenue here. But that's where my background in marketing, I, one of my favorite things when people ask me about marketing is I always remember the old T-shirt from back in the 70s with the two buzzards sitting on a branch. It says, "Patience might bleep. I'm going to kill something." You know, we're going to be marketing in a way that we're drawing customers in without creating traffic problems.
I think all the marijuana shops coming to town are going to market in the same way because they're taking advantage of the fact that there's moratoriums on the neighboring towns.
Yes.
Two, you say you want to deal with compliance, but there's no legal requirement that you have a location before vetting the town and having a host agreement. That's been the precedent that's been set in the last six months, but there's no requirement. So I think it was perhaps presumptuous to sign a 20-year lease without even approaching this board for feedback on the location.
Can I interject?
Right ahead.
All right. So the lease has an initial term of six months. And it, we have options to renew up to 20 years.
So we're not totally cutting our throat.
Okay. But that's different than what you represented before, that you have a 20-year lease?
Well, we do have a 20-year lease.
You have an option for a 20-year...
We have options. And that is in the, that's spelled out in the document that you have on the location.
What I was trying to, to express there was that we are willing to make that commitment. But of course, if we're denied because of location or any other reason, we left ourselves a, a way out. But we didn't come in here and ask you to change all the rules so we wouldn't have to invest in the town before we asked for your assistance.
I would also encourage you to talk to Open Table while they do have that front location from Main Street. They also operate from the side into that parking lot, and they have heavy traffic and like my colleague said...
And they use, they use that ramp to go to the parking spaces.
Are you familiar with what Open Table is?
I'm very familiar. In my past experience where, when I wasn't doing retail in Las Vegas, I ran an air conditioning company. And we had a real good year in 2010, and we were working with a sub-grantee, help of Southern Nevada. I'm very used to working with nonprofits that help people. And we would work with them and solve any problem that we create. That's just part of being good neighbors and being responsible. We have to come in. This is a small town. I grew up in a small town. It was smaller than this, okay? So I know you can't make enemies in the way you do business if you do plan to be here for 20 years, or if you plan even to be here for one year. You have to be a good neighbor. And we're willing to work with any issues. One of, one of my main strengths, I think, in my whole lifetime is I always try to solve problems, not create them. And there's always a solution. So we had a limited playing field that we could look at. We had to make a commitment, which is the rule. We had to make a commitment with a spot. And there were only two spots we could look at, and that was one of them. And so now we go to the next step and try to solve any challenges that that location would bring with it.
What was the other spot you were looking at?
The bank.
Bank of America?
No, the old bank. The old bank on Main Street.
May I just speak to your point about the location? In our experience, it has been important to have a location to provide the Board of Selectmen with floor plans, you know, well-marked out with like fire exits, how that's all going to work, security plans and all that. You need to have a location so you can design, make your design so that the board can approve it and the city can approve it, and you can work on anything that you need to. And I think that that is the best way to go about things. That's just my opinion.
My, my one cons, well, I, I have a few concerns. Obviously, my biggest concern is the location. Actually, when, when the other company came in, NewCan, just to talk in general, kind of like you are doing, basically, my, my comment was to go anywhere but downtown because we had two spots that were right across, you know, that are 600 feet away from each other. And that it's just, it doesn't feel right to have three in that area or more. The other part of it is, at this point, we have two, now possibly three, host community agreements in the works. I personally would like to, and I don't know how to do it, I would like to slow down the acceptance of host community agreements until we have some of our marijuana retailers established. Because it, it, right now, it's kind of an unknown. It is, as, as we've been talking about it, it's a new industry. It's an unknown industry. And to have two to three out there, you know, the, the town of Maynard does, you know, we, we did vote yes. We are a yes town. We did zone for it. But we want to be able to do it responsibly. So, so those are, that's my concern, is I, you know, I don't want to sit here and keep approving, going forward and approving host community agreements with people, and then all of a sudden we have 10. Because that's just not responsible for us, for our town.
I think, I think maybe that's why NewCan is taking the approach that they are. You know, like to get one hurdle out of the way that they get accepted. But we're not, you know, we're, we're trying to follow the rules. So when we came and talked to the folks at the town hall and saw that there were still host agreements available, we knew that the first thing that we were required to do was find a location. So we did our due diligence and we found what we thought was the best of not a great situation. But when you mention other areas, there are no other areas that allow retail.
Powder Mill does.
I'm sorry, it does?
Yep. And it's the Business District, Central Business District, and Healthcare Industrial zoning.
For retail.
That's allow marijuana retail. Yep.
I wasn't given that information. I was, I had a map drawn of the Central Business District. Now, was it...
Not just downtown.
And we don't have a large town. We're only five miles. So it, so it is still limited.
I even posed that question of, of why is, why is Powder Mill off limits? And I was told it's not in the overlay. So...
And this side is in the overlay too of Main Street, like further down here?
Because we were, we were also negotiating with the folks Maynard Crossing, the shopping center.
That, yeah, that you can't, I don't think.
Oh, I know, I know. That's what I mean. Because we can't, because it's right beside the high school and you measure boundary to the parcel.
And it is part of the overlay district. So you can't, that's not part of it.
We did a lot of research.
The development agreement, I believe, specifically excluded that...
So, yeah, well, the developer had actually given us a letter of intent for Oxford, where we were going into Oxford Crossing, which we thought was great.
Oh, oh, not, no, not, not me.
Yeah, that was part of our...
It's the same, same developer here.
So, different negotiations. And just to piggyback on Justin's point, one of our goals as a board of selectmen is to work on economic development and improve our downtown. And I think a lot of us, me personally, don't envision a downtown, like she said, with four or five dispensaries. I don't think that's something that's going to help our downtown or give the image that we want or attract other stores to come to the area. So that's been a consideration of ours in limiting, you know, or proposing to limit how many marijuana dispensaries can go into our very small downtown footprint.
And if, if we had known that going in, that there was going to be a limit on how many that could be downtown, but that wasn't the information we received.
There isn't a limit, but it's discretionary. I mean, that's why we're a board that can vote elected by our constituents. And I think that's been the concern of a lot of the constituents.
I'm sorry. That's, that's why we're here kind of a little bit earlier and maybe in the whole process. But it was our understanding, we could not even be here unless we had a location. And so...
And we're willing to work with the town of Maynard, the board, and the administration on, you know, doing whatever we can to solve these problems. And we appreciate your consideration. As far as the retail goes, you guys are allowed to limit up to a certain number of liquor stores over the town.
Yeah, the 20%, but we, the town voted that down.
Oh.
Oh.
Humanity voted to...
Want to exceed that number?
Exceed the number.
So, so I do appreciate that. If so, it would have been two. So it would have been already, NewCan wouldn't have been...
But we, we really appreciate you guys having us here.
Yeah.
And, and letting us speak with you guys.
You're welcome to come anytime. We just need to continue the conversation with...
So what would possibly be the next step towards moving to, towards a host agreement for us now that we've hit this first impasse of the location?
Yeah, go ahead.
Since he's here, you can ask him.
Chief, is it possible for you to comment on what you think about the location per se? Because you kind of... Thank you.
I mean, obviously, the traffic and the parking are the issues down there. I mean, we have, have run into a lot of issues with Open Table and, you know, getting that system set up. It's been relatively quiet down there, you know, the last three months. But as you remember, we've had meetings with them just to try and get a, a flow of traffic for everything in that area. But yeah, it's very congested. I'd have to see more, I think. And I am a little apprehensive with having three retail outlets downtown. I don't know what the first two are going to draw for attention, to include a third one really across the street, where like, as you said, 700 feet apart at most is concerning, just because it's unknown. I, I don't know what the first two are going to, you know, how it's going to impact downtown. So it's kind of a wait-and-see a little bit. But yeah, there's some concerns there, I think, that with everything that was raised. Same for the police department.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Somebody in the audience wants to say something. I don't know. Listen, did you say something?
Yeah, there's a board member that's just...
Go ahead.
Go on.
Yeah, come on up. Come on up.
Thank you. Thank you. Glenn McGlyosy, I'm the co-chair of Open Table. Delighted to be here and to be in Maynard here. If we could just go back in history, when we got our permit, it had lots of different kind of qualifications and restrictions to make sure that we weren't a burden right on the town. So one of them was that you just can't walk up to our pantry. You need to have appointments, and they're limited. The other thing that, that we had is that we had a one-year review to make sure it worked. And we worked closely with the police and the fire department and the other merchants to sort out things. So for me, when I think of the property next door, and I won't go into the burden that the building has been with us and being none under repair and vermin coming from it and no gutters and ice, and it's been abusive on our organization, I can't imagine there being a walk-up dispensary next door to us. I, I can't fathom it. And I look at the models that are out there, right, where I believe in Hudson, folks have to park in auxiliary parking, and it brings them there. So therefore, the ability of folks to buy a, the merchandise and smoke or use it in a parking lot, which apparently, I actually observed it happening in Brickline, folks buy it, walk out, and immediately start using the product. It would horrify me to see that in our town. It would, right, to see that consumption right, right in town. One, I think it's against the law to consume it publicly, by the way. But I, I believe that there's lots of different things, as you look at this very thoughtfully, of what are the restrictions you'd put in place, right, in granting this, right? Do you want it to be walk-up? Do you want there to be a review process, right, to make sure that it does work and it's not a burden? At Open Table, we made a very big investment in this town, right, in buying the building and improving it. And we had to come back here one year later. If we didn't live up to what we said we were going to do, you could have pulled out our permit from us. So we took a very big risk. I analyze risk. I teach at Babson. I know what risk is. I know what it is to be a business person. I've been an entrepreneur. We took that risk. So I would say that any time a business person presents their case to you and is worried about $14,000 investment at risk, whatever it may be, that's business, right? Okay?
I get an A?
Sorry?
You get an A?
You folks get A+ in my class. So I'll close in saying, thank you for the opportunity to speak here. But please, I want you to be extremely thoughtful, right, in who gets the permits and what's the review process. We, we don't have folks who could just walk in who are hungry. You have to come in with an appointment, and it's limited, right? And we try to work the best we can with it. And I'm not making a buck on this. I care greatly about this town. Thank you for the opportunity to chat.
Thank you.
If I could say one last thing too, is it was my understanding that we would be working under that same situation where it would be by appointment. So again, if it's by appointment, I don't see how we could create that much of a traffic problem.
One question I have, you know, and normally we ask this in a, in a different way, but if, if it's so hard to find a spot, then why Maynard? Normally, I don't try to detract businesses by any means, but...
No, no, one of the things that I was impressed with your town was that you weren't delegating these retail businesses to some dark alley in an industrial area. I'm sorry, but the first rule of, you know, before it ever became, used a lot in real estate for houses, first it was retail locations, location, location, location. This is what was distressing to us in Oxford, where we were invited to go into one of the busiest shopping centers. The market basket there does $80 million a year. But because the way the town drew a little postage stamp around Kira Leaf, which is a disaster in itself, and then they took like 1,500 feet of Highway 20, which, traffic problems here, Highway 20, come on. It's, it's, it's terrible. But it's because of the way they set up their rules that we could not go... But it's because of the way they set up their rules that we could not go into Oxford, even with an invitation from a great shopping center. But here, at least, I thought it was refreshing that you had circled the business district and said, hey, it's legal, our people have, you know, spoken, they say they want it here, they'll allow it here, we're just trying to do that as, in a friendly neighborly way. I think the gentleman that just spoke, I mean, by the same token of what he was allowed to do, we would just ask for the same consideration, to give us a chance, to give us rules. We're already telling you, we're ready to work within the rules. We're not asking you to, and I'm sorry, but I think it would be a disaster if you were the only town who has circumvented the location first. I'm, that's just how I feel, but whatever we need to do, working with your planning department, your economic development, you know, we're willing to do.
It's evident to me that you guys are a very close-knit community. You guys care deeply about each other, and, you know, this is one of the more enjoyable town or city meetings I've been to. So...
It's getting started. (laughing).
You know...
So the next step, I think, would be to, one, continue the conversation with the town administrator's office, and then we'll, you know, we'll see where that takes us all and revisit the issue.
Welcome that opportunity, I appreciate it.
So Mr. Chairman, yeah, typically in the past, we've been gotten a sense of the board or released directions specifically to move into negotiations for a host community agreement.
I don't think that would be the direction, from what I've heard, but more so possibly helping with location, if that's something that they're interested in talking about.
That's the sense I'm getting, correct.
Can they have public meetings, or just to get some feedback?
I think they're required to at some point.
Right.
So we'd be required by the state to put in notifications for the proposed location of the establishment?
My understanding is legally too, and correct me if I'm wrong, just while you're here, that we don't have, even though we did, we didn't cap it at the 20%, we don't have an obligation to approve anymore, that's correct?
That's correct.
That's right. It's completely discretionary. This contract is a contract between willing parties. Am I being captured, or...
No, that's okay.
We hear ya.
It's a contract between willing parties, and if one party isn't willing, there's no contract, so it's completely discretionary to go into a host community agreement or not. The bylaw cap is what you're referring to, obviously needs town meeting approval, but this board has broad, broad authority to enter into an agreement or not.
I would just say, like, I think our board needs to discuss whether or not we even want to enter into another host community agreement before we send them on, you know, a goose hunt for another location. That's my opinion with that.
Yep.
So Mr. Chairman, I'm looking for direction. We can, on the next agenda, continue to entertain these gentlemen, or the discussion of the next agenda could be whether or not to continue to entertain...
Yeah, I think we have an agenda item that we make pretty clear that we're having, so that the public can attend and the public can comment about whether or not they believe we should expand beyond two at this point.
Well, the only, the only problem with that is, is the town meeting voted that we would.
Yeah, they did, but I think that now as, as things are becoming reality, and, I mean, I've heard people who were very favorable at town meeting, and now they're like, four? You're up to four?
Yeah, well then...
And, you know, so that was, maybe there's buyer's remorse, I don't know.
You think?
But to the council's point, I think it's up to us to, you know, deny the license or not. So at this point, it's just to have a conversation amongst us publicly, whether or not this is something that we want to continue, you know, the conversation.
I don't know what the right number is, so, I don't know.
I think there's two pieces to it too. I think it's whether or not we want to continue to afford, get into negotiations with other companies for host agreements, and we want to specifically engage in a host negotiation with this particular group, because we can feel differently on both those issues.
I would say we should schedule it for our next meeting, which is September 3rd, and then, or the 10th, whichever one it ends up being. And then I would also, at some point, I would put something, I would think that, you know, the discussion might be that we revisit this at the next special town meeting, insofar as setting a limit, because I agree with David that, you know, many people would have, oh, we have two, we said, no, we have five, you know, and we had three, then we have four, now we're at five groups looking to come. And I don't think anybody anticipated that that would be a number that would come up within six months of the last town meeting, so...
And to one end though, like, we don't have any cap, right? So maybe there is a number that the town is...
Yeah, there's no cap, but, you know, so I think it's just a discussion we have to have as a group, without New Can, without these guys in the room, and just have our conversation with the people of Maynard.
Or is there a, and I'm not suggesting that I agree with my thought, but is there... (laughing). No, I'm throwing this out as, I'm throwing this out as a suggestion. Is there a consideration? What I'm saying is, I do not believe necessarily that we have to reconsider the zoning, but perhaps we have to reconsider the zoning. If there's, if there's, if we're hearing from potential businesses, and we're being told by the residents, we want as many as we can possibly get, but we're being told by the potential businesses that you've restricted it so much that we can't find any locations, well, maybe the zoning's wrong. And I particularly think the zoning's probably right, because my belief is that two is probably the right number, but the residents believed otherwise. But maybe the reality is starting to hit in, that either the zoning's too small, or the number is too big, you know, so...
So three items on the agenda. No, it's fine, it's fine.
Can you just put, discuss cannabis-related issues? Put it all under.
Yes, yes you can.
Can it be broad enough that we can have them?
Yeah, yes you can.
Do you want us back?
Not yet, I don't think.
Once we have our next meeting, we'll know. I'm not sure if the meeting's gonna be the 3rd or the 10th, that's still up in the air, but it's gonna be one of those two dates. And regardless of what it is, the next meeting would be the 17th.
Right. So the 17th, you may come back, but depending on the direction.
17th of September.
I assume someone would reach back out to them.
Appreciate your interest in Maynard.
I think they're thinking of time to come and talk to us.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks, been a pleasure. Thank you, have a great night.
Start looking in some of those other areas.
If you pull up the zoning map, I'm looking at it right now. So it, the ones that you have is business district, central business, and healthcare industrial. So it's the blue, the pink, and the coral color.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Okay. Citizens petition.
So who's speaking?
So, Mr. Chairman, it's, just as, maybe I can give a quick history, or like a little background?
Yep.
So, Mr. Chairman, I was approached by residents for, to receive, and I, and give a lot of credit to them, that they, I appreciate they did this approach. They came to the town administrator's office to speak with me, to get feedback or input, whatever, on a, they were considering a citizens petition to adopt a new bylaw in the town. And that was wonderful that they came to me so that I could provide it in my, both my professional opinion and the professional vision, professional opinion of staff, and relative committees, specifically the bylaw review committee. And so they provided me their, just their concept and their proposal, and I had it vetted by those various entities who provided me their response, and I provided for you and the public. With one exception, the chief of police was unavailable at the time to provide it, but he is here this evening, if you'd like to hear from him. Over the course of a week, in review of the input that I got, both from town council and the bylaw review committee, and perhaps other entities, that group has altered their original proposal from a, originally they proposed a bylaw, now they've moved to proposing a recommendation. A recommendation that they would have town meeting approve to recommend a regulation to be adopted by the board of selectmen, that would then be inputted into the procedures of the police department. I'm not going into the subject matter, because that's not my place, but it's, that's the background we have, and that's where we are today, is that currently, it's, they're considering a recommendation, or a proposal for citizens petition to recommend to the board.
So in theory, it's basically a, if it goes forward for a town meeting, if it's on a town meeting warrant, it's something that would then direct, that would suggest to the board what direction the town would like to go in?
Right. Not binding, like that other one we did.
Yes, okay.
Yes, because you are, you serve as commissioners, so to speak. So you set regulations that directs the various departments, in particular, the police department.
Melissa, did you say non-binding, just like the other ones?
Yeah, it's like the other one that we did, where like, you know, it's the hope that the board gives the town's opinion deferent, after hearing how the town would vote on it.
All right. Chief, you want to give us what you guys can...
Lieutenant Mike Knowles here. He's gonna join me possibly, but...
He's coming.
We're gonna wake him up, it's fine.
Mike's legs are a little shorter than yours, took him a while.
So I guess the big picture with this, as I've reviewed the proposal, and, you know, I have some serious concerns with it, and for a whole bunch of reasons, and basically, probably the biggest one is that we have spent a significant amount of time, money, and manpower on becoming fully state accredited, which is the best practices in Massachusetts, we're one of about 80 communities that are fully state accredited, out of about 400 police departments, including college universities. So, a lot of the suggestion here is that they either duplicate or mimic policies we already have in place. And also, I'm concerned with a citizens petition making policy and procedure for the police department. As the board, you delegate that through my contract to empower me to do that, which is in turn how we become accredited. Mike is the accreditation manager, so he spends a significant amount of time doing that. And he's actually, the next two days, going to Hopkinton PD and doing their assessment to help get them accredited. And on top of that, our policies and procedures, as Lieutenant Noble has done, probably about 50 communities have mimicked our policies and procedures, because of how, quite honestly, because how well they're written, what the lieutenant and I have come up with, and they use them as a model for the accreditation process. So, I think we capture all the concerns that were proposed, and I think we satisfy all those concerns. So, you know, I'm more concerned with a citizens petition of some sort, changing our policies and procedures, because some of these, some of the suggestions here do contradict or remove some of the things that we do. So that's the big, the big picture for me, without getting into the details of what was proposed. So I don't know if that's helpful or not, or if it creates more questions.
When you say that some of the proposals remove things that you do, can you give me an example?
For instance, cooperating with the federal agency in the last year, I mean, the last month, we had the FBI here, we had 30-plus FBI agents with a SWAT team, and the cooperation there is essential, because regardless of the agency that's here, if they're, if they're working in Maynard, we want to be involved, in at least the intelligence part of knowing what they're doing. Not assisting them and working with them, doing what they, you know, doing what they're actually doing, but if something arises on a side street, and we're not informed and we're not, you know, kind of working with them, we're gonna get calls from the residents. They're not calling the FBI, they're calling Maynard PD, and we're gonna show up there and not understand what's happening. So, the cooperation, regardless of the agency, is essential for us to do what we need to do. So to not cooperate with them is a big problem.
So, I'd like to clarify the cooperation part of it. So, you know, I believe, if I've done some of my research correctly, you know, you, the Maynard police would not, quote unquote, go with ICE to apprehend someone, as far as, they would not act as agents of immigration to apprehend anybody, correct?
Absolutely, never happened.
You don't have authority to do that, is that correct?
Unless there's a federal warrant, criminal warrant.
Okay. So basically, your cooperation would be what?
There's so many hypotheticals, I guess, but if ICE came here and said, we're going to find somebody on Main Street, any address, the most that we would do is probably go there and make sure to keep the peace, because if it turns into something that they don't anticipate, we're still gonna get the 911 calls. Or worst-case scenario, if there's some type of use of force, or some kind of, you know, engagement with the, with the people that they're dealing with, and the federal agents, we need to know what's going on. So we would probably have an officer just monitor and not assist, and probably sit in his car outside and just make sure everything goes smoothly. Because if something doesn't go smoothly, we're gonna get calls, and if we show up there and we don't have an understanding of what's going on, it's just gonna either delay our response, or it could create a situation where, you know, we're not very comfortable with.
Right. So my understanding too with cooperation is that ICE has encouraged local municipalities to share information with them about certain individuals, and it's up to that individual municipality whether or not to share information. So I think that also goes to cooperation, like, if you know the whereabouts of someone, or if somebody's being held locally, that kind of thing. Like, where would Maynard's stance be on that in terms of cooperating with a federal agency?
I'm not sure that that's accurate for, I haven't seen that, but...
The one thing is, is any arrest that we make, ICE is notified through our fingerprint system. We don't notify them or anything, but I think that's a misconception of, anybody we arrest, we fingerprint, goes to state police, which then goes to the FBI, which goes to every federal agency, to identify that person, because then we get 45 minutes later, that person's identity back. In the last few years, we've had at least five or 10 that have come back in a different identity than what they had for their identity, you know? So that's one thing that we have to do. That's how sometimes they get notified, and that's how they call us. It's not ever, we never have called them, we never do call them, but that's how they're notified of somebody in our town or...
Is it similar to the type of thing where, you know, say you arrest John Q. citizen who is a, who is a legal citizen of the United, the legal citizen, right? And you arrest them for something, you process them, you put them through the system, you fingerprint them, same exact thing, and you get a phone call from the board of probation because you ran the person, and they want to know why you ran them?
Yeah.
It's basically the same, it's just a different organization that's looking for them.
I guess let me just clarify something, so...
It's not, you're treating everybody the same, as far as that goes.
So, when we make an arrest, it's a criminal offense. ICE deals with, the discussion that we, you know, I guess nationally is the civil offense of being deported for not being a citizen, but not violating any criminal laws. When we arrest somebody, it's a violation of mass criminal law. They get arrested, and part of that process, which mandated is we fingerprint them to identify them. The fingerprints are electronic, they're, it's a live scan, you know, it's all just a piece of glass, and we put their fingers on it, and we do it for two reasons. One, we're mandated to for the booking process, which now that electronically goes to state police, and then throughout the FBI, as the national criminal information system network. That's where they would get notified, other federal agencies, but it has nothing to do with the Maynard Police Department, it has to do with the mass state police pushing that information out. And we do it also, a lot of times, and it's happened several times, is that we don't have positive ID on somebody, so when they're under arrest criminally, we need to identify who they are. And we've had several instances where they use, say, their buddy's, you know, driver's license, or something like that. So we find out that their fingerprints come back from a previous arrest, that they're not who they say they are. So that's the reasons why we do that.
Under the lieutenant's scenario, where you arrest somebody presumably for a criminal offense, and they get fingerprints...
It's always for a criminal offense. We don't arrest anybody for any other reason.
So, well, that's partly what I'm getting at here.
That was my question.
That they're arrested on, for committing some type of crime, and you fingerprint them, and the report comes back, and if that report comes back to the Maynard Police Department and says, hey, this guy's not a documented individual, Maynard Police does what?
First off, we don't, we just get it back with who that person is. First off, we don't, we just get it back with who that person is. We don't get documentation, we don't know the documentation. There are certain things we ask, like country of birth and this, because we have to offer through treaties, the United States treaties, like their notified, consular notification. There's mandatory notifications from certain countries that we have to, and that's a treaty with a lot of countries because citizens don't want people thrown in jail. More, not here as much as other citizens in other countries that, you know, nobody knows about that they got thrown in jail. But we have to know, go through a certain part of the booking process. We don't know, we don't ask, it's never asked, it's in our policies that we don't ask. That's not that. When their fingerprints go through the federal system, ICE knows, okay, those fingerprints are flagged, and they've called. We can go over the purpose of detainers, ICE detainers, which, again, we can't act on them. That was decided by the Mass Supreme Judicial Court in the Lund decision, that that's just a request, we put a detainer on them. That means nothing.
So if they contact you and say, "This individual is flagged by us," and they inform you that, you know, "We're looking for them" or whatever, I don't know what terminology they use, there would be no basis and you would not retain that person beyond what anybody else?
Again, it follows under a policy, which is G O 12-4 prisoners' rights, all detainees are treated equal and afforded all the right to bail. The Lund decision confirms that, that they get the same afforded.
We can't hold them. So if ICE calls up and says, "Hey, we really want this person," the only thing we're gonna say is that you can probably go down to Concord Court, because that's where we're bringing them. What Concord Court does with them?
Would you tell them that you?
They'll ask, they might ask, you know, "Where are you bringing them?" We'll tell them they're going to court.
Would they go in there besides Concord Court, though? I mean, that's our local district court anyways.
They know, they don't ask like really, they say, "You're gonna bring them to court."
It's like option A or no other option.
And quite honestly, from everything that I know, is ICE is very unresponsive in a lot of situations where they never go and get them. It's, they have personnel shortages and whatnot. They might call, but I don't, you know, the follow-through is very limited, I think, which has nothing to do with us, but you just ask, you know, you might find out later that they came or they didn't show up.
I'm aware of one incident that happened in Maynard that got publicity on social media. And without getting into specifics, if you're able to, can you describe what happened there in that situ? I think you probably know the situation I'm talking about. There was apparently a stop for a speeding violation or something.
I can explain, yeah.
And then, just so that the public has an understanding of what happened and that we can then?
They'll use a name.
Exactly, I don't want to violate.
The person was speeding, he was pulled over, license check or this, he had a suspended license, and he was arrested. Part of the reason why he was arrested is because he had received four to five other violations that year, two of them being criminal violations that were summoned. The officer explained, he goes like, "He's not getting the message." A lot of times, you know, he'll summons, he'll summons, but he kept driving in that manner, in a reckless manner. He was arrested, when he was brought to court, or sometime in that time after court, he was picked up by ICE. Again, when he was arrested, he was fingerprinted. That's what, how ICE got notified. We never notified ICE, the department didn't even know that he was picked up until the whole thing came out.
You delivered, you, whatever the term is, brought him over to Concord District Court for his?
Yeah, because at the time of the arrest was early morning, you know, so he wasn't gonna get bailed, you know? So we bring him to Concord Court, and that's, that was our, the end of our involvement.
Brought him off, left, and?
In that incident actually explained, we had absolutely zero idea on multiple, multiple prior interactions with that, with that party, that he wasn't a legal citizen, had no idea. And the officers summoned him in and had given him multiple verbal warnings.
He'd actually been arrested earlier in that year for a warrant arrest. That's why, like, we didn't even know, you know, that that was gonna happen, because if he was gonna get picked up, if that was the time they were gonna pick him up.
It's just not an inquiry, inquiry that we do. Immigration status has, just, we don't do it, we don't have any questions about it. You know, the citizenship thing is a typical booking question, and there is some, you know, this policy and this, you know, the consolary notifications in very rare cases, but it is something that we would do if it was required.
So basically, what I'm hearing, you, both of you say is that your job is to just stop someone from breaking the law, not the immigration law, but the law that anybody would be pulled over for that, or picked up for that. So it's nothing to do with the immigration status of the person.
It's not, it's not something we've ever asked.
If they broke the law, they broke the law. If it's a moving violation, or if it's a warrant, or whatever, so that's basically just following up, and the fingerprints is triggering all the other after, you know, aftermath effect.
There is a, and I forget what they refer to it as, but Boston has a policy with their police department, which my understanding has been that the Maynard Police Department is very, very close, if not identical, to the Boston Police Department, which, I forget what they call it, I'm trying to remember, where they don't ask, it's, they don't ask for immigration status, they don't arrest for immigration status, they don't do anything of that sort. And my, from what I watch, from a political standpoint, Boston gets praised for that. And from what I gather, you guys do very similar stuff, and I'm wondering, are you familiar with Boston's policy and is, does Maynard's sort of?
I'm not familiar with Boston's, but I have to be honest with you, I think that most, it's a pretty standard procedure. We don't, police, local police do not enforce immigration laws. And it's not a concern, it's not something we're empowered to do. Even if we wanted to, we don't have the authority to do it. So it's just not a concern for us, and it's never, it hasn't been.
To move the conversation along, Mr. Chairman, maybe we should ask the people who are interested in the topic to give their rationale for why they think this is important for us to support.
I'd like to point out too, is there are times that we have had to work with ICE on a, on a ser-
It's up to the chairman, yeah.
On a serious criminal issue, like a person that has had serious crimes that, you know, as police officers, we know like the details of it and that, and that's somebody who, you know, me being a member of the community and that, not just police department, but a member of the community. I don't want in my community, and I will help, like we have helped, because it's our charges also that we're arresting him on. But there are other times where they've notified us that they're coming into town and just to let us know that they're gonna be in town, you know? I don't want to lose that, like, ability to like have that knowledge of that. There's also public records laws. If they make a request to us, we have to give them certain information, just like we'd have to give news agencies and other people certain information. Just that if he was arrested or if he was that.
Okay, so, thank you guys. Just quickly, I wanted to make sure that everybody involved had an updated copy of the petition that we're talking about.
You have to introduce yourself first.
Oh, I'm sorry, so my name's Elliot Prisby, I'm from the group called "Maynard Welcomes You," and I'm one of the people who helped to author the petition that we're talking about. And we've met with pretty much everybody here, so including Chief Dubon, Lieutenant Noble, and most of the people on the select board. Those of you who we did not get to, I'm sorry, it's just the timing was, became too much of a thing. Some of you might have the most updated version of it, and I wanted to make sure that everybody did.
So it's the recommendations, this is the August 26th?
No, it's been updated since then.
Since yesterday?
Yes, so, oh no, since yesterday? No, not since yesterday.
Sent one out this morning.
But essentially, so the draft, if this, if you have the one that Greg sent out yesterday, then that is a updated version. I also wanted to make it clear to everybody that this, the updated version that he sent out was adopting the recommendations by the Bylaw Committee and the Town Council, and it has been sent back to her for her reapproval, so we're waiting for that.
I believe we're on the same page.
Okay, great, I just wanted to make sure. And just in regards to the chief's concerns about delegating their responsibilities to the citizens, I reached out before we sat down to write that document, and at that time, the police department deferred to the Board of Selectmen and advised us to speak with them, because you're the ones who are ultimately in charge of the police department, so that was why, as many of you know, we started meeting with you folks on an individual basis. And again-
Which selectman did you meet with?
We, we, yeah, we met with David Armond and Justine. We did not have time to meet with Chris and Melissa, and I'm very, I'm very sorry.
You've never reached out to contact me, have you?
Not yet, no, sorry.
No one from your group has.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
And just in full disclosure, I'm in that group, so, for our conflict.
That's okay.
And just for clarity, I didn't-
I'm just, I just find it curious, because I'm not had to find. And this has been going on for like two or three months?
No, I understand, and Chris, it was our, it was our full intention to reach out to you, but things, things escalated rather quickly, so it's-
I don't know what escalated, but.
So, what escalated?
We just, the timing of everything. We realized that if we wanted to do this, we, in time for the special town meeting in the fall, that we had to move really fast, and then we started talking to people and realized that deadlines were a lot closer than we imagined. So we had been taking a relatively casual pace in meeting with the Board of Selectmen to run the petition by them, and then all of a sudden, it was like, "Oh, we have to get going on this, we have to start collecting signatures and going to meetings and that kind of thing." So our priorities changed a little bit from meeting individually with the selectmen to taking a more mass approach, if you will.
So is there a reason in particular that you're in a hurry to get it on this particular town meeting warrant? Is there something happening? Did something happen?
No, no, there-
You know, with the exclusion of the national political level, because you did reference that earlier?
Yes.
And I totally understand that. But I think that I've shared with you that I've worked in law enforcement-
Yes.
-for several years, and so, you know, there is, there is a fair amount on this, on the regulation, that it just feels like it doesn't actually apply to town policing. So that's why I'm just curious what the rush is per se, I guess.
We're, one of the big parts is, we're interested in trying to get it done before the federal election in 2020, because we've just been watching things get worse and worse and worse for vulnerable people since 2016. When we, so when the group first formed, we did meet with Chief Dubon and Lieutenant Noble to talk about it, and at that point, we kind of all, we're like, "Okay, you know what, the president's really unpredictable, we don't know if he's gonna follow through on all the terrible things he's been saying about immigrants, and we don't know if he's gonna follow through on the repercussions to the police departments of, you know, towns that adopt these kinds of policies." In the subsequent three years, we have seen that he has kept his promises in regards to immigrants and other vulnerable people in the community, and, you know, putting kids in cages and camps and that kind of thing, and deporting people and tearing families apart. And there has not been repercussions for cities or towns that have adopted this kind of thing. Not that he hasn't tried, but it's been declared unconstitutional by, I think, three separate federal judges, so.
So, and I understand that you're saying that it hasn't been, there hasn't been any repercussion, you know, for towns that have declared it. But again, I guess I'm, the one, one part that I struggle with is, is the fact that we, we have, I guess I'm still looking, I'm still struggling to find what kind of protection it would give that we don't already give now. So I guess that's where I'm trying to-
Right, right, I see, I think I understand what you're saying. So there, essentially, I'm gonna read this from a document I have, because we thought that that was one of the concerns that people would have about it. So it basically provides a mandate to guide the police department in reinforcing and supporting the department's mission to establish partnerships with the community and to build long-term relationships. It also improves the safety and mental well-being of the whole community because victims and witnesses become more comfortable to report crimes and assist investigations, leading to a decrease in crime rates. Furthermore, the status in question is necessary to take a stand against racism and white supremacy and that kind of thing, by acknowledging that Maynard, you know, welcomes, welcomes people here.
So, so is there a way to, the chief and Lieutenant Noble have said that there are policies that pretty much are in place that mimic a lot of what you're proposing. Is there a way to kind of come together with that and basically promote the fact within the community that we are, that it is something that we already do, or that our officers already do?
We couldn't, yes, that. Also, I'm not familiar with what those, with what those policies are, so.
What policies?
The, what Chief Noble was saying, I'm sorry.
You've met with them twice to discuss?
This was, this was, this was a long time ago, so things have changed a little bit since then.
So, so the chief and Officer Noble made several statements and comments-
Tenant.
In Lieutenant-
He's upset, he's-
Just like loaded.
So, the chief and Lieutenant Noble made several comments and several statements. Do you take exception with any of them? Do you find any factually incorrect?
The only thing that I take any real issue with is the case in question that we were discussing. I was at court with that man when he had his hearing, and forgive my lack of like legal terminology, but the case was basically thrown out, because there was, there were some discrepancies in what our police department had on their records and what the RMV had on their records. So there was conflicting information, and the judge said, "This is, this is not, you know, this guy doesn't need to be in jail," and they, I don't know if threw it out is the right word, but that's the only thing, so.
But, excuse me for interrupting.
Yeah, please.
But I guess I'm confused because I don't think, and maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think the fact that he ended up having some criminal charges brought against him had anything to do with the actions of the Maynard Police Department, other than the fact that they did what they would have done to me if I had the same record that that gentleman had.
This is, this is true, David, but the implications for this man are greater for him because of his status. So I'm sure most people in here have had some kind of like traffic violation or something like that, but the difference for, between all of us and then this man is that there's the potential there for his life to be completely ripped apart and destroyed by it. And, you know, and again, yes, was he driving recklessly? You know, yes. Was that a good decision? No, obviously not.
And he was driving without a license, correct?
No.
Or a suspended license?
No, that's, well, that's, that's, that's the part where there's a conflict of information. The report, from what I understand, from the Maynard Police was that it was, and then there were reports from other authorities that there wasn't, so that was, that was the issue.
But either way, it was, it was not a malicious intent on the part of the police department to say, "This guy, we're gonna arrest because..."
Profile them, basically.
Yeah, he wasn't profiled.
I can't say, but what I'm trying to, what I want to emphasize is, again, that these, we do have, you know, immigrants in Maynard, we do have undocumented people living in Maynard, and they're affected by this like far, far more severely, and it's a scary time for them right now. Also, sorry-
How would they be affected if they don't commit a crime? And how, if they don't commit a crime, they're not affected, they're living amongst us, and nobody's going after them to-
I mean, can anybody, can anybody here raise their hand who hasn't been like pulled over for like a parking ticket, like anything like that?
You don't get pulled over for a lot.
Or not pulled over for a parking ticket, but we all like-
I've been pulled over.
Yes, I have, I have too, right?
Were you speeding when you were pulled over?
No, I'm actually, I think I have a pretty good driving record.
No, but I mean, there's not, I, my question really is not about the individual, you know, case, because that's a, you know, whatever that was, that was.
Right.
We all saw the Facebook posts and all the nonsense and, you know, the foul language and everything else that came behind it, right? We all, we all read all that, we all saw all that, right? So that was part of the whole process. I don't know what that meant, but that's what the process played out. My question is that the chief and the lieutenant made several statements about what their policies are and how the Maynard Police Department acts. My question is, do you, in your group, in the group that you represent, see anything or believe anything that they said to be not factual?
Personally, no, but I've talked to people who do believe that that's not factual.
What's not factual?
That what they're, what they're saying. There's, there have been, there's some concern from people we've spoken to that not everybody is being treated the same.
Okay.
Okay. I think we've got it.
It's not my place to call on people, so.
Okay.
So if you have a station?
Sure.
Yeah, we have about, the line is gonna be, we only get about, you'll be behind that lady in the green, I think, if you get in line.
No, you didn't see the line, that's it.
But it, but this is not, this is not a hearing, this is a meeting, and it's a discussion, and we're not gonna go all night with back and forth about what we believe and how we feel and all that. So, yes, sir.
So you'd be glad to hear what I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Ken Estbrook, I'm Chair of the Finance Committee. This has been really enlightening, so thank you for the comments that you have, and I do appreciate the passion on both sides. I'm not really here to comment on the merits of this. What I want to talk about here is the process. Now, we're in parallel, taking a look at the warrant articles for special town meeting. I've reviewed what our town council said to me, sent to Greg about this. So in the end, if this passes, it's a set of recommendations, a recommendation to you. Essentially, the effect of this- Essentially, the effect of this is to recommend to you to pass regulations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's something that, at that point, uh, I assume that you're not going to take this piece of these, uh, these four pages and put them wholesale into the Maynard Police regulations. What you would do is have, uh, the police department review them and see what could get integrated into it. So, at most, you would have a process where those four pages that have been presented by the, in the citizen petition, would be reviewed by the police department for integration, presumably with the, uh, interactions with the petitioner. Okay? I guess my point is, is that could already happen. You could direct that right now. You, you could sit there and say, without having to go to town meeting, without having to have a vote, you could have that process happen now. Uh, and that way, the police department gets to keep the, uh, those regulations in place that have been, uh, adopted by so many communities. And we can maintain our certification and we can weave in whatever might need to be woven in. That's what's going to happen after the March, uh, after the October town meeting anyway. Okay? So, it's either going to happen now or it's going to happen later. This isn't going to get adopted in whole, so I, I'm just trying to understand the process. And the reason why is not from my own personal education, but finance committee has to give a recommendation to, to town meeting. And right now, based on this, I sit here and say that our, you know, our recommendation would be, if it's passed, it's going to be submitted to the board of selectmen for their action. And they may, you know, direct the Maynard Police Department to take action on this, to adopt the regulations as they want to. I'm just thinking that could happen now.
And would the police department be open to forming some kind of committee that incorporates like bits and pieces with members of the community until it could be integrated into current police policies?
Um, I'm willing to do, you know, we serve the community. And, and the trust that the community has in the police department is essential to our, our success. Um, ICE had suggested in 2017 that we form the, um, Maynard Human Relations Committee.
Yes, I was a big fan of that.
Um, you know, I don't know if there was a lack of interest or, and that was, I felt, a conduit for, and I do disagree with some of the things that he said about, um, there being people that have, haven't been treated properly. We have a, a very, um, a very good internal affairs policy and process. If somebody has a complaint against anybody in the police department, it gets thoroughly investigated. Um, and I haven't had any complaints come in. I get a lot of emails from people with traffic concerns or, yes, uh, two days ago, um, issues about, you know, business, the vandalism. I, I, I respond to them and I, you know, I interact with people even if it's through email, but, um, so.
And I agree with you, but you, you also have to understand the perspective too, that there might be members of our community in more vulnerable positions who might be afraid to make complaints. And I'm not saying that, you know, just playing devil's advocate that our police department hasn't done anything, but those people do exist in our community. And I think part of the aim of this policy is to make sure that those people have a voice and feel protected and that in the future, they could come to you and feel like it was a safe space.
And, and I think that the commission or the committee that the board, you know, work, they, that the board appoints, certainly could have members of the police department and whatever community, uh, members you feel appropriate. The conduit could be, the complaint can go to them and they can filter it and decide if it's appropriate or if it's accurate, or if there needs to be changes in, you know, police policy procedure or, or, or just general awareness. And that was my thought with that committee.
So, so my point simply was, whatever mechanism you use after this passes, and I believe it will pass. Um, my, my guess is, since it's only a recommendation, the, you know, the, the, the town meeting is likely to pass it.
It's a majority vote, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, so my guess is that it passes, and then my guess is it's going to come before you. And my guess is you're going to take action on it as you feel is appropriate. My point is, you can do that right now.
But right now, we're not prepared to do that. So, that's, I think, we're doing research and we're, we're talking.
No, but that's the very action that I'm saying you could take. Yeah, I'm not saying you, I'm not saying you adopt that. What I'm saying is, is you, you, later on, you're going to sit there and take those four pages and you're going to say to the police department, take a look at it.
So, okay.
But we could form a committee like the police chief wanted.
Yeah, you could do that.
The agenda item.
You could do that now. And that's all I was trying to say.
Could be the mechanism for complaints and filtering out that information. Because you had brought up, that had come at a time where there was graffiti, I believe, or some other kind of hate crime in town. That's when you had brought up that idea as a way to address those issues as a community. I think that's. And I think part of it was just the launch, like, I think everyone agreed it was a good idea, but we just never make it to that step of.
And, and.
And part of it was after meeting with, uh, Elliot and his group. That was part of it. So, there would be that mechanism.
And, you know, uh, there, I'm sure there's, there's a possibility that people are afraid to come forward to, to communicate with the police department. So, that would be a, a way for them to do that, um, and not feel intimidated, I guess, by the police department. But, you know, quite honestly, I look at our policies and I feel like most of the comments that he's proposing are already included in there in, in one way or another. Maybe not specifically the same exact language, but how we treat people and, and, you know, all of that, he's trying to project with this policy is already included in what we do. So, I'd really want to look at that to, to alter the policies we already have. I, I'm not opposed to it. Um, but I, I think it's more of a political statement of a welcoming community than it is to alter the police department policies. Um, but that's something that we obviously can review with this, uh, if the committee gets formed.
Okay. Yes?
Hi, uh, my name is Rabbi Michael Rothbaum. Uh, I serve as the Rabbi of Congregation Beth Elohim in Acton. Uh, 280 families strong and growing. Come visit us. Uh, I'm, uh, very grateful for the opportunity to speak in front of the board of selectmen and to, uh, speak to our police, uh, leadership and, uh, the town administrators. Um, I am also a resident of Maynard, live next door to your finance chief, apparently. And, uh, at least, at least one of you is my landlord. Uh, we moved to Maynard, well, we moved to the area a couple of years ago, um, for me to take the job in Acton. Um, and immediately, uh, I took the opportunity to meet with, um, the Acton Police Chief, Chief Burrows and Deputy Kogan to talk about, uh, the very issue that we're talking about tonight, uh, which is, um, would the police department act as auxiliaries to ICE? Would they collect information? Would they share information with ICE? Would they detain, uh, undocumented immigrants, uh, on behalf of ICE? Could, I, I said to these guys, I was nervous because I was new in town and then we're a chief, police chief and a deputy, you know? Scary. Said, what do you think? You know, we're, I, I want to tell you, we're Jews and we have a history of being immigrants. Um, in fact, anyone who came to this country, you know, before 1924, you know, folks could basically come on in. But after 1924, the laws changed and we got the idea of this, the idea of the illegal immigrant, which, you know, that my, my great-grandparents, they didn't, they just showed up like folks, you know, with Irish and, and Greek and, uh, Italian names, uh, who we're surrounded by, perhaps in this room. Um, gosh, you know, we, I'd hate to see the police doing that work. I'd hate to see, um, uh, the police going after folks who, take care of my people, um, who are the home health aides, um, for my congregants, who take care of our elders, who take care of our children, who build our buildings, who pave our roads, um, who make sure that we literally have roofs over our, our heads, uh, in our building. Um, these folks who are called illegals or undocumented immigrants or human beings, they make, uh, this country run. They make our community run. They take care of, of all of us in our synagogue. Um, gosh, I'd hate to see, um, the police be used for that purpose. Uh, especially coming from our textual tradition, which says over 36 times, hey, you know, remember that you were, uh, immigrants in the land of Egypt, remember how you were treated. Uh, don't do that to other people. Make sure that you love, honor and respect immigrants. It says it 36 times, just in the five books of the Torah. Um, and I swallowed hard and they said, uh, yeah, of course, we wouldn't want to do that. Yeah, of course, we can make that a policy. And I said, oh, that's, that's really great. Uh, and maybe this could be an Acton policy. Maybe this, the entire town could say, no official of this town will collect information on behalf of ICE, will hold people based on their immigration status, will share information, will collect information. And low and behold, it went before a, an august board like yourself. And that was passed in the town of Acton. Um, and then I moved to this great place called Maynard and heard that it was a welcoming town and a progressive town. And then I heard that this was, um, somehow controversial. And so, I'm surprised. That's why I stayed here till 10:30 to say, uh, gosh, this is who we say we are. Um, if this is what y'all are already doing, um, let's just put it on paper. And if.
I think that's the point. I'm sorry.
I, yeah, so.
Can I just interject?
So, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, if, if it's, if it's your policy to not do these things, let's put it on paper as a town of Maynard.
We have it on paper. That's what we were trying to say. I actually worked with Acton.
Uh-huh.
To, to give them, and I gave them a copy of all our policies, which they incorporated, many of them, to get themselves accredited. Uh, they recently got accredited, I think, two months ago.
So, you're, so you're saying you agree with the policy, you just don't like the wording?
No, I'm saying we have policies that cover that already. We have policies that state, uh, bias-based police officers are prohibited from considering race, national origin, ethnic, members of the public deciding to detain a person or to stop motor vehicle or anything.
I just, I'll just say, um, no employee of the town of Acton shall detain a person based on the belief that that person is not present legally in the U.S. No employee, employee of the town of Acton shall inquire about or collect any information regarding the citizenship or immigration status. No employee of the town shall perform the functions of an immigration officer, nor shall the town use town funds, resources, facilities, properties to assist in the enforcement of federal civil immigration law. So, that's, I mean, it's short. If you don't like that, that's too long. It's real short.
No, that, that's fine. And we, but we.
Which is different than a, than a general.
We, they put in.
I'm sorry.
They put in wordage that we don't have the authority to do. We don't have the authority to enforce civil immigration.
So, let's put it, let's put it in writing like Acton did.
I guess the diff, I guess the question is, why do you have to put it in writing if it's something that we don't do?
And can't do, can't do.
Right, exactly. I think that's what.
The reason we have to put it in writing is because you've got forces in this country which want to demonize the folks who take care of us.
No, and I'm not, I, I understand what you're saying about that from a national political level. I completely understand that.
Good.
What I'm saying is that we, that in, in the local policing community, what, what you want them to, what you want all of us to put on paper, and I, I do understand that.
Great.
What you want us all to put on paper is, is actually reaffirming. I don't, we, we already do it. I don't understand.
Well, it's like, I guess, I mean, this is so exciting that I get to have this much conversation with y'all. This is so fun. Um, it's, I guess it reminds me of like when two people who love each other come to me and they say, we, we want to be married. And, and so, well, what do you need me for? Well, we need to make it official in front of all of our families and friends. And we have something called a ketubah, which is an outline very specifically written of the requirements that two married people have to each other. Um, you know, we're not married to the undocumented immigrants in our, in our country, but boy, we depend on them. Boy, we run, you know, all of our food, the, the back of the restaurant, the farm workers, again, you, you know. I mean, you'd have to be blind not to know that this country, this town runs on immigrant labor. So, so let's put it in writing. Let, that we won't, that we say, absolutely won't tear families apart. We won't cooperate with a system that says those people, their labor, we can use it up. And when they're used up, we can kick them out. Why wouldn't the town of Maynard say, yeah, that's, that's already what our cops, our, our police force, our law enforcement's doing. That's already what we believe. We want to put it in writing. Why wouldn't we put that in writing?
Because I feel almost, and I, again, and I, I'll stop after this. Um, because, and again, I, I said, I've, I come from a background in criminal justice and I, and I, I've worked in local police, you know? And, and I'm almost, I'm almost offended for the police officers that this is how the community feels about them. You know what I'm saying?
I don't, but, go ahead.
Because it seems like the community doesn't trust that they're doing their job.
So, so, uh, there was a great, there was a great conservative president who said, trust but verify? So, uh, I'll tell you why, why the chief and the deputy in, uh, in Acton said that they were completely on board. They said, yeah, if we don't say this out loud, then the folks who are the victims of crimes in Acton won't come forward. Because they're terrified of what will happen when they're in police custody. We want to make sure this, this place is safe. So, yeah, we want to tell our undocumented community, yeah, if you step forward to report a crime, if you're a victim of domestic violence, if you're a victim of a labor violation on a job site, you can come forward. We're not going to take you, like they do in Bristol County, when we.
But you can tell them that.
We, we can tell who that?
I can tell them that.
No, 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 but if you have it in writing, if you have it in writing, then it's official.
They're proposing to make a policy out of that, that's all.
That's what, that's what government does, right, is make policies.
Yeah.
You're policymakers. We, I mean, you know, don't shrink for, you know? It says in the Book of Esther, perhaps you were put in this position for this very moment. Maybe this is the moment that you've been, that the world has been waiting for you to step forward and.
We're going to have to separate church and state.
Um, I don't represent a church, so.
But you know what I'm saying? So, it's, it's, you know, unless.
I haven't eaten dinner, so I get it. We waited a long time.
Yeah, I understand that.
I'll, I'll let someone else.
Enjoy your dinner.
Thank you.
And, and, you know, I think that, um, the suggestion and, um, that Melissa had made and Ken had made to sit together and talk about some of these things makes a lot of sense. And we'll get that facilitated with Greg, that's if you're willing.
Yes, I'd be happy.
You know, I mean, it's, look, there's an answer to the questions. There's an answer to these things, there's solutions. Whether it gets written down, you know, I, I think we've all seen that the Maynard Police Policies. As a matter of fact, the first time we went through this, which was in 2017 or 2016, you guys approved those policies. They, you guys took those policies out of a meeting with the police. Whoever met with the police took those and they, and they were, they were approved. They were, they accepted them. And now, we're not accepting them again. So, now it's a, a new discussion.
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
The first, the first time this came to pass, when we had the first discussion in the town of Maynard about, um, sanctuary city, welcoming community.
Did you name the bill?
The people that met with the police took the, these items and took the, the letter, there is a letter, a, a policy. And we took, they took it and they, they were okay with it at the time. And my.
I believe we shared in, in, uh, full transparency, I mean, the, all the police department policies are public. They're available to anyone. I can forward them to the board. Um, I can forward them to, um, uh, selectmen. Um, um, I guess through, through the chair, but we can give them to everybody. And if you want to look at them and make suggestions and recommendations, I'm certainly happy to meet and, and discuss it in more detail. I, I guess it's a circular argument. I, I think we cover all this in our current policies. I guess that's the only hangup. If there's a, uh, an opportunity to kind of modify the, what we have, to, to, to cover or capture more, then that's fine. I, I'm not opposed to that. But I, I think it just goes to, I, I think we already covered all. That's, that's, I guess, where I'm coming from. So, if we look at all the policies we have, I'd be more than happy to forward them all to you and, and certainly can review them and make recommendations.
I think there's people in the audience tonight and the purpose of bringing this petition forward is people feel differently. So, if there could be a dialogue about how there could be a happy medium without.
I think it's the lan, it's the language, the way it's interpreted. I think that's what they're looking at, so.
So, I, I mean, I'm just happy to serve.
For the next meeting, which is during the 10th.
I think there's other things we can accomplish through the committee that you proposed based on your prior ideas.
The chief's correspondence from then, and it's also one of the beacon villager. And just print it and put it in the, um, next packet for us to review it. Thank you very much. So, we're waiting on another copy from town council, right? You, you said that earlier, that, so we'll get that and then we'll take a look and we'll keep banging away at it until we get everyone's satisfaction.
Well, Mr. Chairman, did you, did you not also direct, uh, me to, to form, I can form a working group.
Yeah.
To, that would, you know, examine the, the regulations that we currently have, the policies we currently have for the board's consideration of, to adopt. So, I can, I can do that. That's.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Okay.
And I'm happy to be on that for the board.
Just curious, was this petition, um, certified by the clerk? So, is it, is it now?
No, it's not.
No, it's not as official.
Hasn't been some.
No, there's.
Still in drafting form.
So. So, it's, it's a recommendation, but it's not a citizen petition yet?
Correct. They, they were kind enough to come to me and ask me for my input.
We're in the process of collecting signatures.
Oh, they are?
No.
Or you, like, order the way.
You want to talk?
Oh.
More.
Okay. Uh, let me just, so, so we're going to get, we'll get that back from our town council and then, and then we'll form a group and have discussions with.
Sure.
The interested parties and, you know, look, there's no one here that wants to see the type of things happen that you guys are describing and the things that the rabbi was describing. There's nobody here that wants to see that things happen. But there's also, uh, there are also ramifications if we go too far the other way for, in certain areas. And that's, and that's, you know, that, you can't not, you can't not pull someone over and if they're breaking the law, not arrest them.
That's not what we're saying.
I understand, I, I'm not. I understand, I'm not saying that, that's what you're saying, but the suggest, the rabbi was saying that, oh, you know, "I'm afraid, I'm afraid I'm going to get pulled over." You know, or, or, "I'm going to get pulled over." Well, we all get pulled over. He said, "Is there anyone that hasn't got a speeding ticket?" But if you, if you, if you get pulled over, if I get pulled over on a speeding ticket and I've done something wrong, I've, I've broken the law, I get arrested.
But you're not in.
I understand that, but how do they, they don't know who's an immigrant. The, the, the Maynard police don't know if you're an immigrant when they pull your license over, you have a Massachusetts license, do they? That's a question.
They're afraid, they're afraid.
I, I understand that, and I don't want them to be afraid, but I also don't, I also can't, I also, you're trying to police something that the police don't know now. How do you know if someone's an illegal immigrant? You don't, but you have to go through the process.
They're, they're doing mostly the right things. I think the problem is we need to get the word out to those immigrants in our community who are afraid. They are afraid, as the rabbi said, to say if they saw something wrong. They are afraid to go to the police. You can understand it because you're not in their shoes.
You don't know what shoes I'm in. You don't know what shoes I've in or what countries I've been to, and what, what situations I've been in. So you can't tell me what I've been and where I've been in my lifetime.
But I mean, it's a different situation.
I would like to say that we have responded hundreds of times to people who were probably undocumented, and then some that definitely were undocumented, that were victims, and we have assisted them. It's not like we're not, you know, if somebody calls and we respond, we go to them. It's a catch-22, what they're, some of the stuff they're proposing, that if undocumented person gets pulled over, but we can't ask them what their immigration status is to give them any kind of different treatment. We don't ask any of that type of question. They get treated the same as anybody else would. How it plays out, like you said, is, is the difference.
In front of you in line. You're standing on a, you're standing on a bad toe there, so.
Um, hi, Lydia Clancy. So, I just want to maybe bring another point, and this could maybe support what they're asking, but in a self-serving way from Maynard. I think, I don't think what they're saying is the police are doing anything wrong. I think what they're saying is they want to make it known to the immigrant population that they don't have.
Anything to fear.
Anything to fear. And I don't know how it needs to be worded, or what policy needs to be made, or announcement, or whatever, however it's done, but from the school district's position, if, the more we can reassure the immigrants that are in our town and send their children to our schools, the more likely, and this is a whole other aside, the more likely it is that they will report their nationality, or their race, or ethnic identity, which then can only help us in terms of state funding our students, because right now, we don't get accurate information regarding the racial or national makeup of our student population. And because of that, what we deal with is not reflected in what the state gives us in terms of assistance. So that's another way to look at it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lee.
I just want to say, Jeff Swambry, I think a working group is a good idea. I think Elliot's put on paper what he hopes to see out of the police department and what the chief and the lieutenant mentioned are specific objections, but we haven't seen those. I don't believe you've seen those. I think what would be helpful for that working group is to have those specific objections, which of what is written down on paper is redundant with the policies, and what you think is unfeasible and what you think is feasible as it's written right now. So if a working group was to be formed, I think having that list out from the accreditation officer would be very helpful in terms of moving the conversation forward in a reasonable manner.
Thank you. All right. Want to tell meeting articles?
Mr. Sorry.
Something else?
I haven't spoken well. So, Mr. Chairman, I, I recommend that you, the chairman, consider rearranging the order of the agenda to allow the McDonald's to, to be present for article, or number twenty-one, to do number twenty.
The chief and the lieutenant still have to be here?
We'll, we'll table the number twenty to the next time.
No, I just meant the later.
Do you want to put it to the next time?
I just meant due to the, to the time of the night, just to put them a little sooner.
All right.
Thank you, chief. Thanks, lieutenant.
Thank you.
Lieutenant? Thank you very much.
He won't remember that.
Wednesday's are running, we're running out of Wednesdays.
So is all right, Mr. Chairman, to, to go to number twenty-one?
Yeah, yeah.
Very good.
All right.
So, go ahead.
Chief McDonald.
Mr. Chair, if you would, if I, if I just give a quick summary?
Yeah, yeah.
So McDonald Development is working on a mixed-use project located at 115 Main Street. This proposal includes site access through the municipal parking lot. A restriping of the majority of the parking lot would be necessary to achieve this proposed site access safely. And so at this time, the proposed reconfiguration of the municipal lot would result in a net gain, potentially, of two parking spaces within the lot area. It would also standardize the width of the spaces to eight and a half feet, which would require a special permit from the planning board. So what we're here today to, to speak with you about is to ask the board if you're comfortable with the planning board opening a public hearing to discuss the reconfiguration of the lot behind 115 Main Street. It's not necessarily to discuss the proposal that you have in your packet, it's just, since it's a municipal lot, we just want to make sure this board's okay with the planning board opening their public hearing to fully vet the proposal.
And if, if we didn't say we were approving, that we were approval, that we approved it.
It's been one hour.
It would be, it would be a problem with access to this, to this property.
So, yeah, the site that, the configuration for this project has been proposed to access through the municipal lot, and that's for a number of reasons. One of them is safety. The main and walnut intersection is, is a difficult intersection to have site access through. Also with their proposal and the configuration of the building, that it will allow for, you know, wonderful river access, which is, you know, one of the goals, I think, of the community. And so if we were to have the entrance as it is now, you would lose that. So that was based on their conversations with the planning board over the last two years, so.
And I know we didn't want to get into the proposal itself, and I don't see there's any way around the proposal that's being made.
For sure.
But my concern is that, in effect, we're turning what is a parking lot into a residential street, because that's the only access to that building.
So, Mr. Chairman, I want to check, really, if you have any objections of, of moving on to the planning board?
I don't.
No, we really don't have much choice, because.
Well, but, but.
They need to discuss the act.
We're just trying to be sensitive to the.
No, I don't think we need to go to, do any different.
Okay.
Will the planning board be able to discuss the topic that I just brought up relative to it being a, effectively a residential street parking lot?
Yep. You know, the proposal that's part of their package will be, will be vetted, residents will have a chance to voice all their concerns, VHB will peer review the project.
Now, did Dwayne look at this already?
He did a preliminary look at it, yes, and, you know, I think it will be more fully vetted once it goes to the planning board. But at this point, since it's, it's a little bit of an unusual situation, because it, it will require a special permit from the planning board, but it's not McDonald Development's necessarily property, so that's why we wanted to be sensitive and, you know, not have the planning board open a public hearing on a town municipal lot without, you know, having this discussion first.
And the other, the other concern to, to them is how it impacts the CVS parking and the traversing of vehicles through that parking lot, which is already a mess, tight as it is, and then you've got, in effect, we know that there will be additional vehicles that will use that now as their public access to get to the back entrance, rather than going up to high, to the top of the hill and coming down using the new residential street parking lot, if you follow what I'm saying. Much more traffic going through the CVS parking area. Anybody coming off of Main Street is not going to go down, all the way down to McDonald's, take the left, go up the hill, take the left to come down. They're all going to turn in if they're coming from the stow side.
Guilty.
Well, yeah. Everybody does it now, as it is.
All right.
Now you have, now you have people who live there that are going to be doing that.
You don't have to go to the planning board here to voice these opinions.
I'm concerned about the size of the spots.
I don't know if there's anything you can do about.
I, I, I don't know. So, no, but certainly, well, certainly we can make our, any considerations we have, that we want to have considered, we can make them known and have them considered.
I'm concerned about the size of the spots.
I was just going to say, is they going from ten to eight-point-five? Is that what it's going, not, not, from nine to eight-point-five?
Eight foot six.
So the spots currently vary between eight-point-five and eleven feet. Right now, they're very inconsistent.
Yeah.
Significant amount of them are about eight and a half feet. So, we worked with Wayne.
Some of them less.
We worked with Wayne to come up with a reasonable spot size.
Yeah.
And Wayne agreed on that, VHB.
Yeah, agreed with us on that size, and we had variations of this and went back and forth with him about the grade going into the lot, drainage, you know, the size of the spots. If we're going to be taking any way, we wanted to add some, not lose any.
Yeah. No, and I, I respect that. It's more, it's more the concern, because I, I went back and forth with the town planner today about it, just because, because I, I don't know what, what a typical sized spot is. So, you know, and he was saying basically that a compact car is eight and a half and a regular car is nine. So my concern is just that, and I, I respect what you're trying to do, I really do. My concern is that you're, that it's, it's already kind of hard to park out there if you're a bigger vehicle anyways, and I don't know what that's going to look like.
I think if you check the spots, what are there in this type of lot, or a lot that we made on, it's more of than eight feet than, than eight foot six. So at eight foot six, they're actually not that narrow. That, all lots, you pull into Dunkin' Donuts, you don't have much room to, I never measured the lots, but I bet it's probably eight feet. You know, they're all a little tight, yes, but what we did is made them eight foot six, all the same. Some of them are less than eight, some of them are eleven feet wide, and we ended up with two extra spots. So two extra, I think, is a plus. You're losing some where our driveway goes in, but we're gaining the same amount on the other end. So that's a wash, and the rest of them is a gain of two. And I guess the thing here is you come down Main Street, that's how we first proposed it, come down Main Street, take a right and go into our building. But now we propose to give you that permanent, you know, that strip of land, twenty-five